It's seven o'clock on Tuesday night, June 25th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So.
Second?
Second by Ms. Campfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Okay, we're gonna start. First, I want to start off the meeting just by letting everybody know that there's a problem with Comcast. So this is being recorded, but it's not live. And it'll be recorded on Channel Eight and then also on YouTube. So, um, and if we get a live feed shortly, then it'll be online. Great. Any walk-ins here this evening?
Oh, aye.
Ms. Carr?
Do I come up?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hey, Kathy.
I have to read this because I don't want, my words come out flustered sometimes, but I would just like to say, on behalf of myself and the Board of Registros, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank those involved with the recount held on June 20th. The recount was something that I have never participated in before, and I wasn't so much concerned with the final results as I was with the preparation and the process that would require a recount. The two registrars that has, that have experience with recounts were Conley Ford and Bill Francis, so they shared their knowledge of the process. And with all the pieces in place, the staff was hired and trained, and it ended up going very smoothly. And I, I just wanted to say thank you to DPW and Tom Grime, to Officer Brad Stanbeck of the, uh, the Cituate Police Department, and to the SHS staff for the gym setup. My sincere thanks to Richard Bowen for donating his time and expertise to, in overseeing the recount with Cindy Amara, Town Council, Leon Cattaldo, Recording Secretary, and Nancy Holt, Final Tally Town Clerk, I'm sure who has nothing better to do with her time at the end of a fiscal year than to be the Final Tally Clerk at a recount. And it was amazing that she was there, and the moral support that I got from everybody was wonderful. To the recount clerks and runners, you are all amazing. With the agents observing the recount, you remain calm, prof, with agents observing the recount, you remain calm, professional, and did a fantastic job as always. And I just wanted to thank everyone and their participation. That's it.
Can you give us the results?
The results were, basically, the final tallies were the same, except for a couple precincts. There were like three difference, but they kinda flipped.
Oh.
You know? And one blank. So it was, that was it. It's the same as, you know? So it was great.
Good news.
It was great, yeah.
And were those ballots that went into the machine?
What about, I'm sorry?
That, that?
So, all ballots that were counted were ballots that were, there were 24 ballots that the machine couldn't take. They're called auxiliary ballots. Sometimes if you don't fill in those ovals, especially absentees, if you don't fill in the oval and you only put a check or a dot, the machine lights up and says, "Do you wanna cast your ballot?" I mean, "Do you wanna go revote your ballot or check your ballot for errors?" So, um, when the absentee isn't there, of course, we have to put it in the auxiliary bin and hand count it at the end of the night. And the voters have the, voters that are there present have the option to do the same thing. They can go back and fill in the ovals, they can spoil their ballot and start over, or they can have the warden unlock the auxiliary bin and put it in there for hand counting at the end of the night. So we had 24 total of those at the end of the night, so.
Right. So, this was the recount for the Senior Center?
Yes.
And it wa, there was no change in the vote? It still passed? And, um...
The total vote, right, right.
The total vote.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have any comments?
Nope, just thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
So I wanna thank Rich also personally, that's, you know, saved the town thousands of dollars probably for doing that. It cost the town, I think we estimated about five...
It's under. It came down, the Cituate High School didn't charge us for custodial services. That was nice, 'cause they were already there. So it's under, just about, I think it's under three now.
Okay.
Yeah, off the top of my head.
So somewhere around $3,000 to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And there was no change, but I hope what, what this does to the, for the community is that it builds confidence that our election numbers are accurate, and that, that they do come, you know, the machines do a good job, and in the future, people will have the confidence not to question the votes.
And moving forward, there's always room for improvement in any process that you do. And I've learned a lot. I, I went to the conference, the Town Clerks Conference, the week before. I switched out my Thursday afternoon class from Campaign Finance. I found out that Lauren Goldberg of Culverman and Page was teaching a class, a popery class, but this section was going to be on recount, so sign me up, I'm there. And it was just, I raised my hand for a question. I said, "I'm so-and-so from Cituate, I'm having a recount." And everybody in the class just went, "Ah." And I'm like, "But it's for a question." They said, "Oh, that's easier." And I'm like, "You think?" You know? But, yeah, so it was very informative and enlightening, and they did say, "If you ever have a recount for candidates, never use your own election workers. You have to go out to other town clerks and their highest election workers and town clerks." So I did learn a lot, so, yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
But thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Kathy.
Any other walk-ins? Mr. Price? I'll get you.
Good evening, Gordon Price, 48 Menlot Road. It wasn't my intention to say anything about Kathy Gardner, I'm glad she was here. She ran an absolutely incredible, flawless recount, uh, last week, and, uh, it just went so smoothly, it was amazing. So Kathy and the entire staff here at the Town Hall are to be commended on a great, a great, uh, great event. Reason I'm here tonight is I just wanna let you know that, um, the Build a Campus Steering Committee is morphing into a Capital Campaign Committee.
Right.
The intention is that we probably will kick it off sometime in, um, July or August. Uh, it's gonna be a one-year campaign, it's not gonna be a three- or four- or five-year campaign like the library. Um, I hope we can be as successful as the library people were, but, uh, we're gonna do the best that we can to, you know, knock down the cost to the, to the town as mu, as much as possible. Um, we've been kinda throwing around some ideas, there probably will be some sort of a big event, uh, in September where we'll invite the entire community. This is not a, gonna be an event that's gonna be geared to people 60, 65 and over, it's gonna be an entire community event, uh, much in the keeping of the thinking that we have that the Senior Center will be a, a community reaching out, you know, process. It's not gonna be just a, what some people think of as an old traditional senior center. Along that line, uh, we kicked around some ideas this morning, and we were wondering if there would be a possibility that a few of us could have access to walk through Seawing and maybe even Gates to see whether there might be items there that could be used for sale to generate funds. So I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but, you know, you can talk to Mr. Bedrow and if that's, if that's, I know there's, there's a lot of stuff in there peeking through a few of the windows, uh, some of it might be, have, have some value to the town to generate dollars. Um, and the Build a Campus Campaign is really a branch of FOSH, because FOSH is a 501(c)(3), c)(3), 3z.
Yep.
And so, um, all the funds that will be accumulated will be funneled through the FOSH account, and then as we accumulate funds, we'll turn those over to the town on a, you know, as-needed basis. So, just wanted to bring you up to date. Um, we are looking at doing naming opportunities like the library did, and I know that those need to be brought to you for acceptance before those are put out on a, on a definite basis. So as we develop that process, that program, we'll be back before you formally to, to introduce that program to you. But, uh, we're looking forward to the coming year and, um, what's gonna happen at the end of the year.
Great.
Thank you very much.
So I'll tell you this, just work with Jim, I'm sure you can walk around it, I'm not sure you can sell the stuff, but once you see stuff for value, you can bring it back to us and we can decide at that point.
The gates is chock full of stuff that are gonna be sold. We're putting everything, we're gonna have a, either an auction or some sort of yacht sale. All that money goes to the general fund. It's not earmarked for anything, but it all comes back to the town for the general fund. But there's, it's full of stuff we're gonna sell.
Okay. Great. I'll be in touch with Mr. Bedrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other walk-ins? I'm gonna wait for, for the end for you, okay? Just because, if you look at the agenda, you'll know why.
Well, you allow me to make comments.
Oh, you will?
Without that, you're not even talking. Is your account on?
Just wait one second. Ms. Ferguson?
Linda Ferguson, 57 Kingsway. Um, I'm here because I was here three weeks ago. Um, just as a reminder, for anybody who didn't know, I was here because of the short-term rental tax that is scheduled to go into effect July 1. And I had asked that, uh, you guys rethink that based on the fact that there was a violation of open meeting law, false information given to town meeting, and a general misunderstanding of some of the information that has a huge impact on the competitiveness of, uh, my business as well as all the Airbnbs. So I think it was decided that the town administrator was going to ask Town Council if because of the violation and the, uh, false information, if the vote was even valid, and if it was, could it be put off? And it's been three weeks, and it goes into effect in a week, and I haven't heard anything.
Sure. So we can update you on that. This is our first meeting since then. First of all, there was no violation of open meeting law, there was no false information given, this is, that's your opinion.
Well, the Attorney General feels the same way, so.
Um, and I think, uh, I've, we've heard nothing from the Attorney General, so...
'Cause I can't file a complaint because it's after 30 days since the actual act took place.
So, um, Jim, do you wanna give the update, or I can?
Up to you.
Go ahead.
Um, the vote is valid according to Council, and according to the Department of Revenue, we cannot take another vote on the tax for 12 months after the town vote. So it is in effect as of July 1st.
So as of July 1st, there is a, um, rental tax assessed to everybody who has rental property in Cituate, um, all the Airbnbs, the Inns, and any bed and breakfast that there's, that there is. Um, and what we can do, as we told you last time, um, there was some information you brought to us that I think some people thought was interesting and what maybe not even considered before, um, we'd be more than happy to consider it again, and, uh, but it's gonna have to wait for a town meeting vote. And I think the resolution that we told you was, um, at some point in time, go to the assessors and see if they'll abate some of...
And I did talk to the assessor about that. The problem with that is, the alley is, I still have to collect it from all our guests, and then I'm gonna ask for a rebate back on my taxes, but then what am I gonna do? Send it back to my guests? Like, that, you know? And the, the assessors have to vote, regardless, that, that likely is not gonna happen, 'cause it's, it's not gonna help my guests at all. Um, so, this can be revisited in the fall.
Next spring.
So, my business and all the Airbnbs in town are gonna be put in competitive disadvantage because of this vote, and... Thank you very much, I'm sure, deals, oh, what was the other thing? Um, what's been done to let all the Airbnbs in town know that this tax is going into effect? That was another issue, that nobody's contacted them, nobody's let them know it's happening.
Well, everybody that owns an Inn or an Airbnb or a bread and breakfast pays taxes to the state.
Right.
So they have to fill out their amount, and they pay their state tax, period. And all this is, is the town is piggybacking on that tax, and we get 6% of that tax as well.
No, you're adding 6%. But how do these people who rent these Airbnbs know? There's been no notice, no town email, no town Facebook page, no article in the paper, there's been nothing.
That's the state requirement. The state requirement under the statutes, all Airbnbs are gonna have to register with the state.
Okay, but as we discussed last time, the registration isn't even gonna be up until supposedly July 1, and they have to start collecting July 1. I'm just saying, the right thing to do would be to let your town taxpayers know that you're collecting another 6% tax on them. I guess you'll see meaning here. Thank you.
Okay, any comments up? Any other walk-ins? Welcome back to Cituate.
David Darty, 122 Gilson Road. I wasn't sure, I know Al Banger's gonna be up later discussing the wind turbine, which is obviously what I'm here about. I didn't know if you're gonna allow me to comment or make any discussion during that, so I decided, are you gonna allow me to comment? Okay, then I'll just say one thing before I sit down. When I returned from the winter, four out of the first six nights I was in town, I was wakened by the wind turbine, as with a bunch of my neighbors. So, I'm not sure if the Board realized that this testing program was gonna take almost two years at this point, and it's not over yet, they've only done one quarter of the testing. And you voted back October 2017 to, to keep it running, because it had to be going in order to test. Well, that's not really accurate, because Gordon Dean, who owns the turbine, controls the thing right with his cellphone, and he's participating in the tests, it could very well be off, so we could sleep, and then the night of the test, they could do their ambient background, and then he could turn it on to get the noise. It could work the other way, 'cause it, by the time they come through with this testing, it's probably gonna be close to three years before you get the results.
Well, we'll get an update in a little bit, as you know.
And I won't quote you, what you said two years ago at your meeting, that you weren't an, you weren't very optimistic about the results, 'cause neither am I.
Okay. Are there any other walk-ins? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the report from the town administrator.
Uh, three things real quick, we got a full house. Um, the ADA transition plan is well underway. We voted money for that at a town meeting, we also got a $50,000 grant from the state. They're just about finishing up the review of the town buildings, and then they'll be going out doing streets, sidewalks, parks, pretty much all public land, getting a report back to us. Again, this is just, it's nothing that we have to act on, but it is a plan to see what we have, where we are missing, and what we have to address going forward, so. Uh, it's required, ours is 24 years old, it's kind of on a date, um, so that'll be done by the end of the summer. But that is well underway, uh, and we've expended the grant portion that we needed to within the time limits that the state gave us, so that was good. Two, uh, if you're driving around, you'll see some of our trucks with a big giant sticker on it that says, "Love clicks, buckle up." Uh, we are participating with the Department of Public Safety to once again encourage people to wear their seat belts. I think we're getting $50 a vehicle for every sticker we put on. We did about 15 or 20 vehicles, but it's just a way for us to work with the state to encourage people, remind them that you have to be buckled up while you're driving, and that does save lives. Uh, finally, what everybody's waiting for, uh, Egypt Beach. The paving is scheduled for tomorrow, the good Lord willing and the creek don't rise. Uh, we've been waiting on the weather, but the final pavement is scheduled for tomorrow. That includes the path. If you get on there now, you'll see the boardwalk has about an inch lip. Uh, that's because there'll be a paved path that will connect into that. Uh, so that'll be finished paving this week. We'll stripe it as soon as possible after that. It does have to sit for a little while for the oil to come out. If we get a lot of rain, it's faster, but the parking lot, at least the essential work in the parking lot should be done by the end of the week if it's not raining. So that's all I got for today.
So will we cone off areas for at least handicapped bouts or something?
Yeah, well, my...
Any questions on Egypt?
Yeah, just a question, is the boardwalk the old boardwalk, or is it the new boardwalk?
I think it's the new boardwalk.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's brand new.
Right.
Any other questions?
Striping or not, they can use it.
Yeah. We've already opened it, Sean, for that, just, it's kinda, if it gets full, it's gonna be kind of a little madness without striping, but if you put the striping on too soon, it just gets sucked up by the pavement, you gotta restripe it.
Um, back to the ADA plan, is that going in front of the Commission on Disabilities?
They're supposed to be participating in the process, yeah.
Okay. I just, I know we have to reassign liaisons, so just wanted to make sure they're still kept apprised.
Anything else? Um, the dog park, I know people see that being built over there, any, it looks like it's half-done or something?
Ahead of schedule, I don't have a time. Sean, you got any deal on what's gonna be done?
Talking mid-July right now.
Oh, good.
No.
That's nice.
We're gonna run part of the same problem of running Egypt Beach, the, the paving companies are just so far behind 'cause of the weather, it's almost impossible to come in.
Anything else?
Yep.
Alright, we'll move on to our scheduled items. First one is 7:20, recognition, the first responders from the boat fire. Chief Murphy and Harbor Master Steve Moan.
Good stuff.
You guys?
Good evening.
Stephen and I would just like to recognize, uh, four young gentlemen from Cituate that on June 4th, the afternoon, just before 4 o'clock, we were called for a marina and a boat fire down at 48 Jared Road behind Pier 44. Uh, when we first got there, um, we had a boat on fire, marina on fire, five victims that were hurt, a lot of challenges to deal with from the Fire Department and the Police Department, but before we got there, we found the actions of these four young gentlemen saved lives and saved a lot of property. So we'd like to recognize, first, Paul Solomon, come on up, Paul. Paul is the fuel attendant who worked at our marina at the Cituate Harbor Marina. When Paul first, uh, when the, when the fire flashed in the boat, Paul went into action, first shut off the fuel, emergency fuel shut off, minimizing the, the impact of the fuel on the fire, also it has hazardous materials, hazardous materials potential. He also called 911. He closed the door to the pump though, which saved that building. Do you agree, Governor? Absolutely. If that door was open, the whole heap even underneath there was all in flames. If that door was open, it would've got inside, and that building would've been gone, would've been a much bigger event. So he swift actions there. He also grabbed an extinguisher nearby border, and he tried to extinguish the fire. It was quite a fire, so the extinguisher didn't have much impact, but all his execution, shutting that door, calling 911, and also, um, shutting the fuel down, minimize that impact, which could've been much worse. He then tried to get everybody off the dock, clearly the air was safe. Following that, the three Harbor Masters that were assistant Harbor Masters that pulled up on Unit 1, John Ward, Mike Ward, and Andrew Jaja. Come on up, guys. These gentlemen were on Unit 1 with a Harbor Master boat. They pulled up...
Here, come on up here, guys.
Come on up here, guys. What else?
Steve, move, move a little bit so the TV can get.
All right. So these gentlemen pulled up in the Harbor Master unit, first thing they did is try to clear the docks, tell all the boats to get off the docks immediately. They pulled up, and at that point, the boat was starting to burn off, the lines burned off, the boat started floating away. This boat was gonna float north into the, probably by four or five boats that caused a catastrophe. What they did, their actions were very dangerous, very swift, but they succeeded, and they put all the, a line around the bow, and they towed this boat out of the nearby lorry to get it away from Hound's Way. So this minimized the impact to the marina, to hundreds of thousands of dollars of boat damage.
These guys.
A hazard that we'd probably still be dealing with now. So the actions of these four young gentlemen, these four young men, uh, could've saved lives, but definitely saved a lot of property, a lot of impact in this fire, and swift actions that you recommended tonight. From us, but also, Senator Patrick O'Connor would like to make a commendation to, to these gentlemen.
Senator O'Connor, how are you?
Thank you, uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just wanted to be here tonight to personally thank you, hearing about this going on, and then hearing about the heroism, and Chief Murphy described it brilliantly. That, that's awesome work, it really is. I always say the two best parts of this job is being able to help people and being able to recognize people are doing amazing stuff, and this is kind of both of the same things at once. Um, and to be able to be at such a young age and to know and to go into that sort of action immediately, not only saving property damage, but saving lives in the, in the balance, this is something that's really important to us. And myself and State Representative Patrick Kearney, who couldn't be here today, he's actually testifying out in Western Mass on some fishing issues right now, wanted to be here today to, uh, present to you one of the best parts of our job, is to be able to, when the session starts in the Senate, we actually give names and recognitions to the clerk, and we only have a certain amount that we can give each and every year, and what we wanted to do was give each one of you the award, and it's an official citation from the Massachusetts State Senate, and it's a recognition to each one of you, and we had written to the record that this is in recognition of your bravery and courageous actions in Cituate Harbor on June 4th, 2019, resulting in a life-saving response. And be it further known, the Massachusetts State Senate extends to you nothing but best wishes for continued success. Thank you so much, you truly are what make towns, communities, and you've been, you've been amazing in this, and, um, obviously a tragic, uh, way, uh, tragedy averted to start the summer, but, uh, thanks to you, and so congratulations, guys, welcome.
Off the camera, guys. Thank you.
Alright, don't go yet. Oh, go, go, keep on, Steve.
So I always wanted to say, I just, I'm talking to the King family, they're doing well, we're all gonna know whatever, how we're doing therapy, so they'll be out soon, but they wanna thank everybody. Everybody's committed to your commitment by the Public Police Department, everybody that was involved that day, um, they, they give us a dead ground, you can thank God and rock and roll.
Great, thank you. Steve, anything to add, or?
I just can't be more proud of my staff and the way they acted that day. These guys, their, you know, quick thinking, did save the marina and saved a lot of people, a lot of shit. Um, and I think Chief and I have worked together for a while now, and, um, I think all that training came into play.
Thank you, guys. So I'm sure the Board wants to say things as well, and who wants to start off? Mora?
Sure, I'll jump in. I...
Actually, just introduce, say their names again, you went through the three Harbor Master people real quick. I know Michael Ward. Michael, how are you? Coached him when he was about this tall, best soccer player I ever saw. Um, what's your name?
Andrew Jaja.
Andrew?
John Ward.
John.
Brother.
Gotcha. Probably saw you there, Jeff Solomon. And, plus, I heard you, yep. Great.
Oh, I just can't tell you, I, I'm so impressed. I didn't realize how young you all were. I knew you were all new working down at the harbor, but I had no idea how young you are and the composure that you've demonstrated, unbelievable. So very proud, you make us all proud, fine young men, keep staying here and contributing to Cituate, we need great folks like you, and thank you for saving not only, uh, the King family, 'cause you really did, right? And as well as the rest of the harbor, so thank you, great job. I know your parents are proud, you did well, moms and dads out there.
Karen, anything?
Yeah, just, this is extraordinary, and, um, the Kings are my neighbors, so I'm particularly feel emotional about it, and thank you for helping.
I just want to shake her a big hand.
You guys are awesome. Great job.
Sean?
Well, like, I saw the fires, talking to, I think, uh, Mr. Murphy, and a half an hour before it started, he said he was just doing some training in the harbor, and half an hour later, an hour later, it was thick black smoke, and I had heard exactly what was going on, and I share everyone's comments, I'm very proud of what you guys did. My question is, have any of you guys taken a fire exam? Alright? Nice. Sorry, Steve, you got a little something.
That's good work, yeah.
Yeah, no, very proud of you guys, you did excellent, excellent job.
And the only thing I'll add is, most kids your age would've grabbed their cellphone and started filming what happened, right? And you guys didn't, and you jumped into action, you saved millions of dollars worth of property, you saved three little kids and a family, and, you know, you averted a huge, I mean, if a fire had ever gotten in that tank, who knows what would've happened? You know, just the quick thinking, the responsibility, the, you know, you all are very brave to put yourselves in harm's way to do it, and we really appreciate it. We don't have many situations like that. Karen was actually around there, 'cause she sent me a video of it, I couldn't believe it. And then when I heard, you know, that, that you guys jumped into action, I was just couldn't be prouder. So thank you all very much, and, uh, congratulations, and I know you're gonna do great things in the life.
Thanks.
Thanks.
that towns provide burial space for deceased veterans and their spouses, and the cemetery on Cudworth Road is getting quite full, so almost out of direct burial spaces. You'll remember that in 2015, we completed construction of a cremains garden for burying, for interring ashes of veterans and spouses, that accommodates up to 62 urns, and has enabled people who prefer to go that way to be buried in a nice restful area without taking up space for direct burial. So, the DPW wanted to explore alternatives for how we could expand space for additional cemetery burials. They looked at alternatives such as buying adjacent property, which was available, we looked at developing a town-owned land that was behind the Little Red Schoolhouse, which was a potential area, and then we looked at improving land use with the existing cemetery. And frankly, we built on the idea that the Catholic cemetery used, which was to use the remaining space and pre-install burial vaults in advance. And you can therefore bury them by creating a long trench and burying the vaults side by side, it's a much more efficient way to make use of the land, and it enables another of, couple of other kind of cool aspects of it is, by pre-burying the vaults, you can then subsequently have an internment in the middle of the winter, because it's easier to access the vault. And secondly, when you are doing a direct burial one-off each time, you invariably run into a previous burial that perhaps was not quite on center, and therefore you have to move that over a bit, there may be large stones, roots, that sort of thing, so basically we're doing clearance. So, the, what, this specific project is going to be built along the Little League field, the little baseball field, you know, there's a large brushy area there filled with poison ivy, all sorts of other things. Basically, we're going to clear that brushy area, remove and move that stone wall, put in a decorative fence, and put landscape plantings on the baseball side of that fence. It won't actually take any more space from the baseball field, it'll just take the rough zone. And it'll provide actually a more attractive side to the baseball field than the rough zone. Then we'll install 77 new burial vaults on there, and then build an all-weather access drive, so that burials can occur throughout the years I discussed. And then, in addition, we're going to install a concrete base for a future, something called a columnarium, which is an above-ground structure for burial, for holding additional ashes, that'll be at a separate area. This project does not include the actual vault for that, but it includes preparing the foundation for it, because there is in the works from a previous Situate resident who is working on making a donation for the columnarium in the future. That hasn't happened yet, but if that doesn't happen through a donation at some point, we will prepare the area for that, so that the town can proceed and do that as we so wish. So bids were solicited, six were received on May 22nd, our engineering firm reviewed them, looked at the vitals, references and documents of the low bidder, Dandell Construction of Hanson, they've done work with us before, and we're happy with their work. The conclusion is that that firm is an experienced, responsible contractor capable of carrying out this project for $212,000, $212,874. The funding has been provided by capital appropriations in 2015, 17, 18, and 19. We have available around $297,000 for this project. And therefore, we would recommend that we go ahead and award this contract to Dandell Construction. It'll be managed by the DPW and by, as Paul Scott will be kind of the hands-on person to work with Sean and his team, so that won't add extra burden to you, presumably. Okay? So with that?
Karen?
Just two questions. Is the pathway that you're describing, is that this line that sort of-
Yes.
Okay.
It will be a new drive at that end of the cemetery, and will be basically L-shaped, connecting with an existing drive.
And will that be reinforced turf, or will it be an actual driveway?
It'll be a driveway, it'll be a gravelish, gravel driveway, or maybe it's a blacktop driveway. Yeah, blacktop driveway.
And then the other is the, in this contract price, does that include the landscaping as well?
Yes.
It's all in cost for it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Karen?
How much time does this buy us?
How much will it require?
Time, does this buy us?
Before it fills up?
Yeah.
Before it fills up, how much?
Oh, how much time will that expire? The wood expire got me.
Sorry.
Because we are talking about expirations here, aren't we?
How many barrels can we do a year?
10 to 15.
And you're adding 77 plus?
Yes, plus if the other thing comes along.
Or 10 years we'll be looking for.
And we probably have about 30 spots for, in the existing cremains garden, remaining. So, this is probably puts us in around a 10-year horizon, I think that's what you're looking for. How long will this last? About 10 years. Construction will begin in July, and we would be, expect to be finished before the fall.
Thank you.
Yes.
Laura?
What would, the delta was huge between the low bidder and the high bidder, what was the biggest?
Well, it's characteristic of the current environment.
Times, yeah, I know we do get those types of things, but that was-
Yeah, seriously, well, the two highest bidding firms, if you notice them, there's three that are kind of within a range, and then another one that's kind of goofy, and then two that are, whoa. There were a couple of very large construction firms who have a lot of work to do, but if they can pick up a nice project along the way, would do it, if we were that desperate, but the-
So it wasn't like one component that really-
No.
-stood out?
Just, uh-
All right. And then, my second question is, what type of fencing are you putting up? You say a nice fence, I'm just curious what the definition of that is.
Yeah, it's, it's an iron fence, you know, iron picket fence.
Picket?
Iron, here, I'll show you.
Oh, I think I know what you mean, okay.
Yeah, like a-
Like a cemetery-type fence?
Like-
Like what you think of when you see a movie and you're walking by a cemetery.
Like when you see a black iron fence, yeah.
Okay, okay, nice, okay, great.
Yeah. You know what, it will look probably just like the one in the, in North Situate that was installed, you know, be-
Okay.
How long is the fence? Like, because those are little kids that play on those fields, and they climb on those rocks, and will climb on that fence, we just don't want to be able to go over it.
It won't have points on it, it'll have a bar across the top, so you won't have a-
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
No impalement.
Yeah, no impalements, impalements are unnecessary.
Okay.
Sean?
No, as usual, very easy to follow, very well laid out, questions will answer, timeframe and length, so forth. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
My only question is, after this, this piece of property is probably full at capacity in terms of being-
Yes, yes.
So after this and the 10 years or whatever pops up, we'll have to find another site?
Yes, yes. One possibility is to move into the ball field if we can find other areas that can be used. It'd be one logical extension of this. The area behind the Little Red Schoolhouse, we're all excited about, but it was actually a spoils dumping area for previous burial, so it's really just a rock field, and it's almost impossible to use that land, so that land is not available.
Great.
Great. Can I have a motion?
Sure, move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for the Cudworth Cemetery Improvements Project, Contract 15-PG-93-2, to Dandell Construction Incorporated of Hanson Mass in the amount of $212,874, as specified in their bid response dated May 22nd, 2019.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. For the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Thank you. We will proceed.
We're going to move on to our-
They have those assigned tonight. Yep.
The next topic of discussion is an update from Al Banger on the wind turbine.
Okay, thank you. You've asked for an update on what's the status of the wind turbine acoustical study, and that's what I am prepared to do today. The, as you remember, the turbine was put into operation in March of 2012. Around 2014, 15, began to hear some comments about whooshing sounds that disturbed people during certain wind conditions, that those complaints primarily occurred in the late spring, summer, and fall nighttime hours. We did a study to determine the wind conditions that generated these annoyances, based upon the complaints, timing of complaints, comparing those complaints to the wind conditions at the turbine where it measures and is controlled. The Board elected in 2017 that we would shut down the turbine when those conditions existed between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM from June to October 15th. And those have been put into effect every June subsequent to that, and they're currently in effect now. Then on May, in May of 2019, the Board awarded a $50,000 contract to Epsilon Associates to conduct a wind turbine noise compliance test versus DEP standards, to create a, basically, a legal study to determine, is it in compliance, is it legally in compliance? If it's not legally in compliance, then we would have to ask that it be put into compliance. If it is in compliance, then that's what we're looking to discover. Epsilon worked with the DEP to establish what was the agreed-upon, final agreed-upon noise level compliance monitoring protocol that the DEP would support. It involves four Situate locations during four weeknights when the specified wind conditions were met. And those specified wind conditions were determined again by the residents who had issues, who had legitimate issues with it being noisy in their environment, and wanted to know if we would check it in under those conditions. In April, the wind conditions were met, and Epsilon conducted the noise compliance testing. The engineers reported that the wind turbine was audible at three of the four locations. They have not yet analyzed all the data to determine that it would meet, or fail to meet the DEP standards, but in their judgment, it would meet DEP standards. In other words, audible isn't non-compliant. And they will then continue to do the testing, they monitor it daily, and will run out to do the testing when those conditions present themselves, for the three remaining tests. And once this is completed, then they'll analyze all the data and provide us with their official summary.
So before I open up to the Board, so it's taken, we haven't found those wind conditions for a year?
Well, we found them in April.
Right.
This April.
So it's really, is it really you're only going to find them in the time period when people are hearing it and complaining, you're not going to hear it in the fall or the winter?
No, the, there's no time of year constraint that we impose, we said, when these wind conditions exist, then you go test, okay? And they determined that those wind conditions, and recognized they're using meteorological data about what's the wind condition going to be at the turbine at the time that da-da-da-da, and then they mobilize, come down here, set up their equipment at four, and four residences, and spend all night monitoring it, they work with the turbine owner to shut it off, so they can get noise on, noise, you know, turbine on, turbine off, get the noise level on both those conditions. And then, that costs around, we got a bill for about $14,000 for that one night test.
You recall, Mr. Chairman, we had the issue this winter where the turbine had the sensor problem, so it was not operating at its optimal, Allison had reported on that, so they weren't going to do the testing when that was not working correctly, because it would show that the turbine was operating at full power, when it was actually operating below the full power, so it wouldn't give us the correct recording, so-
That's right, so that's what-
They didn't do it during, of course, where they were figuring out what was wrong with that sensor. So that's really, that's a lot of the lead time we've had.
I forgot about that, that's a good point.
Questions from the Board?
Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm a little confused. So, the, we're assuming that the only time the wind turbine is a nuisance is when certain wind conditions exist, that other than that, it's within the limit of what we're allowed to-
You know, it may be a nuisance to some people all the time.
And that's what I'm not understanding.
Right, okay, so, but nuisance is different than legal compliance, okay? 3A is a nuisance to people who move and live next to 3A, it's noisy, but is it legally an issue?
Right.
Probably not.
All right.
The same thing with other, you could come up with other noise generators, noise factors, is when Go Green grinds, it's a nuisance, but is it legally a nuisance? If it's legally not in compliance with the DEP standards, then it must be shut down at the cost of the owner of, in this case, the turbine.
Right.
And then repaired, or mitigation somehow take place. If it is in compliance, then they have the right to operate their machinery, whether it be Go Green, or the river training gas, or the turbine. If, when we have asked them to shut it down under certain conditions in these summer operations, we end up paying the owner for his lost income. We said, you shut down, we'll pay you for that.
Okay.
Okay? And any further shutdowns we do that are not based upon it being a legal issue are at our cost, taxpayers' cost, so, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I have a couple. When we get this report back, there seems to be always a question of the wind speed that the residents share with us, and what the turbine is registering. So will we, will that be included in the analytics, you know, sort of the reasoning for that difference?
Yes, I mean, a marvelous device, right? You can get an app, you could look up anything you want to, you can look up what's the weather at nearby weather reporting stations such as Marshfield Airport, and, but that's not the wind conditions at the top of the turbine, 80 meters in the air.
But what I, and I understand that, but what I would like to see is, obviously, when those conditions exist at the Marshfield Airport, what are the conditions that exist at the wind turbine at that time, and possibly do we need to look at, is that the data that we need to look at to determine when to turn it on or off? I'm just wondering if the conditions are wrong.
We did that, yeah.
We did that?
When we determined, when we did that one year during the entire summer, we logged all the complaints-
Oh, that's right.
And we correlated the turbine data and the-
The Marshfield too.
And see, there's actually is a wind difference at the ground and at the turbine, okay?
Yeah.
And at Marshfield, there's a difference in, you know, the west end and the, so and so forth. So, we did correlate-
That's right, I'll look at that up again.
Complaints to something that we know we can measure, and therefore, if we can measure it at the turbine, then the turbine can be shut off with that information. Turbine can't be shut off by whatever some other source of data says, it just, you know, it doesn't have the way to connect to that, so-
Understood.
But we correlated it, and that's how determined that first set of conditions under which we now shut the turbine off at night, in the summer. And then we've subsequently gotten some additional information from residents about what were the conditions that were troublesome, correlated that with the wind turbine conditions, so that they could use that to shut it off.
I'll dig that up, you're right, I remember having all those points. And then, secondly, what were the three locations out of four that demonstrated that it was audible?
I don't, I don't know which was the fourth one. I know that the four residents are the McKeever residents on the Driftway, the Darty residents, the Carl'sburg, Phyllis Carlsberg's residents, and the Vitale residents on the Driftway.
Oh, but you don't know which three?
No, I don't, I didn't ask that, I'm sorry.
I'm curious.
I mean, it's audible a lot of time, I'm not getting away from that at all, I mean, you know, you can hear the turbine in numerous locations around town. Again, audible.
Okay.
Karen? You can pass if you want.
Yeah, come back to me in a minute.
Yeah, Al, it's interesting listening to all this stuff, and I've learned so much by it, and I consider you a real, an expert. In your opinion, and I had, I know next to nothing about this stuff, but I'm of the opinion that the state DEP is still maybe learning a little bit what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, because windmills in this area are fairly new. Have they learned anything since we've done the testing with this Epsilon, and you, I mean, you're very active, you travel all over the place?
Well, they-
You know, if you're building one today, would anything change, would that threshold change? Was it up here before, what's a nuisance?
They did, the DEP in around, let's see, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, but around 2012 or 13 convened a task force called the Wind Tag, Technical Advisory Group, that consisted of engineering professors, three or four firms that did acoustical studies and research, several town people, some from the Cape, I represented insights that our town had, several advocates for no turbines, several industry spokespeople, like from GE, okay? It's about a 14-person group, met about 15 times to gather up all this data, and out of that, they concluded basically that they have some work to do to come up with some studies, I mean, some changes at some point. And whether those will be retroactive or not, and applied to existing turbines is to be seen.
Okay.
So, they've taken a crack at it, and nothing substantive has come from it. We did work with them carefully when we were putting, the reason it took so long to get this project started, because we wanted to make sure that we nailed it with the DEP. We didn't want the DEP to say, well, you did this testing, but you didn't include that aspect of it. So we, and they are holding hands on, okay, this is what you think is legal, right? Yeah. Because we didn't, we didn't want to end up with it having, if it turned out to be not in compliance by one standard, for someone to have arguments that it was or wasn't, and, you know.
All right, thanks.
Sorry for the long answer.
No, it's all right.
That's what experts do, we jabber on and on, probably don't give you the exact, the real answer.
A couple of quick points. Number one, we just got back from our-
some from the Cape. I represented interests or insights that our town had, um, several, um, advocates for no turbines, several, several industry spokespeople, like from GE, okay? It's about a fourteen-person group, met about fifteen times, uh, to gather up all this data. And out of that, they concluded basically that, um, they have some work to do to come up with some studies, I mean, some changes at some point. And whether those will be retroactive or not, um, and applied to existing turbines is to be seen.
Okay.
So, they've taken a crack at it. Nothing substantive has come from it. Uh, we did work with them carefully when we were putting, the reason it took so long to get this project started, because we wanted to make sure that, that we nailed it with the DEP. We didn't want the DEP to say, well, you did this testing, but you didn't include that aspect of it. So we, we and they are holding hands on, okay, this is what you think is legal, right? Yeah. Because we didn't, we didn't want to end up with it having, if it turned out to be non-compliance by one standard for someone to have arguments that it was or wasn't and, you know.
All right. Thanks.
Sorry for the long answer.
No, it's all right.
That's what experts do. We jabber on and on, probably, probably don't give you the exact, the real answer.
Um, a couple of quick points. Um, number one, we just got back from our, our trip to Ireland, and there's many windmills in Ireland. And we actually talked to the councilman there about what they have and what the impact that they have on it. Um, this is in the countries and in the, you know, the little towns around there. They do say that people can hear it. They don't mitigate anything. You know, they don't shut them off or do any of that sort of stuff. Um, but they do say that, you know, people, people can hear it. I don't know if they have any regulations to it or not, but, um, that was a discussion point that we had there. Um, one thing, I think the goal of this is we hired a professional firm that's going to look at this and objectively measure what's going on. We're trying to get to the bottom of it. Um, and I think, I'm hoping at some point in time, we're going to get some sort of number that we say, you know, it's playing at level eight and it can go up to ten, or it's playing at level eight and it can only be seven. And at that point in time, we go back to, um, situatwind, and we discuss with them how they can get it under seven or, or all that sort of stuff. I mean, that, that's our goal here. We've been, we've been kicking this ball down the road for years now, and I think we've got to come to that, some sort of conclusion along that, that line. Um, one thing I will say is, I think, in my opinion, we've done what we can to some level, being financially responsible, as well as paying attention to the citizens, saying, okay, if it hits these conditions, we're turning it off. Every time we turn it off, it costs us thousands of dollars that night, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't remember what the total was, but it's-
More like hundreds of dollars per night, but yes, definitely. Yeah.
Yeah. So there, there is a financial expense or, or a lack of revenue that we're doing. And frankly, the town can't afford, we've signed a contract with these people for fifteen or twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
We can't take it down. We can't. Otherwise, we'll have to pay this company millions of dollars. Um, so we kind of, we're in this, and this is the wind turbine until we get to a situation where we can say to them objectively, your radio's playing at ten and it can only be at five, and then it's up to them to fix it without the financial burden of the town, if I, if I understand this correctly.
Correct.
Okay. So, and what we have done is we've tried to listen to the residents, and we've tried to find those times and that time of year when it could be more of a nuisance than other times, and we've shut the thing off. Um, and they are doing that. I mean, we have to trust that these are upstanding people to some level, that-
Yeah.
If it hits ten, ten miles an hour, it's coming from the southwest, they turn the thing off.
Right.
So-
I mean, there's, there's no reason that situatwind would not turn it off.
But they're getting paid anyways.
Well, they, actually, we paid for the programming. They did, had the programming done. We paid for it. Um, so, and it's no skin off their chin.
Right.
Um, if it, if it meets those conditions, they'll shut it down. And, uh, and talking about the financial aspects of it also, remember that we've committed a portion of the revenue from the turbine to, uh, offset the debt, the citizens' debt associated with the public safety building and the new, uh, middle school. So, those are, we've committed funds to help those residents lower the tax burden of those two products.
And it was vetted coming into it, and it's a, it's a green source of energy.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I feel bad that it impacts people, and I wish that we could stop that, but I think, um, I think we're doing what we can. Um, the only thing, my only frustration with it is the time that it's taking to get to the answer.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I, obviously, you can't make the wind blow in the right direction at the right time, but that's, that's the one thing that I am frustrated at, and I'm sure if I'm frustrated at, so are the neighbors in terms of-
I mean, we could, um, we could change the contract and say, go, actually, the DEP was pushing us towards, no, you shouldn't try to get specific wind conditions. You should go out and get four different conditions and be done with it. Okay? Well, we said, no, no, we really want to get these four specific conditions that were the ones that people were concerned about. So that's one aspect of why it's taking longer, is that we're looking for the specific conditions. We could say, the heck with it, let's go just get four numbers, and then we'll be satisfied. And the result might be that we missed an opportunity to get the specific conditions that were causing concerns for our residents. And so, yeah, I think we ought to stay the course.
You know, it's got to be done by whatever the day is, whatever.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Karen, did you?
I think you've covered, I mean, I think we're all frustrated, and I know the residents are frustrated by, um, the reality that, um, we are, our hands are tied as far as enforcing nuisance without, because of the financial impact and the commitments we have and the DEP regulations. Um, I wish we'd asked Senator O'Connor to stay, because just, to your point about is the information different now? Um, I think this is an area that is continuing to be studied, and I know that there are, um, bills in consideration now at the state level that might give us more latitude to address some of the nuisance issues. But we, we don't have that authority or, um, ability to do so right now. Um, and it's very frustrating because, you know, it's, it's not just Mr. Darty who's just, you know, uh, good about coming and letting them know. It's, we get emails from other people. It's, um, people are affected. Um, so that, you know, I agree with you that if, you know, we don't want to rush it because we want it to be right, but we need to, I think the delay with the, um, I don't know how long that delay pushed back this testing with fixing the, um, I don't know what it was, whatever Jim just said. That's, yeah, that's, that's unfortunate, and I would hope that we are being diligent and making sure that they are really on top of us, um, so that we can come to that conclusion. But I, I think at the end of the day, we, as you said, Tony, last time we talked about this, is the end of the day, if we aren't above that threshold, we're going to have to wait for the regulations to catch up to what these people are experiencing. Um, and that's very frustrating.
Well, the only two things I'd add is, a lot of people worked a long time to get this in place, and the town voted for it. So this is not, this wasn't just thrown up there overnight. A lot of thought and time went into this, and it was, I think unanimously supported by town meeting. Um, and when we do look at the complaints, there's not a ton. There are a dozen? I mean, how many did we have? Five to so?
Six.
Which doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Mr. Darty, I've been at your house, you know, I, I've, I've seen it, but, but it is, you know, those are just two things we have to take into consideration. It was, it was voted on the town. The town wanted a green energy source. Many people have these things.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, but it is impacting one small neighborhood, which kind of baffles me that it doesn't, when the wind blows the other way, that it's not impacting the other people as much, but I don't know. But I hope we can come to some conclusion-
That's cool.
So that we, we say whatever it is and move on. So-
I agree. Yes.
Al, if you can just stay there. I know we're not voting, but I want to give Mr. Darty and whoever else wants to speak. Yes?
Let me see.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to touch upon a few things that Al's brought up, and shed a little light on them from a different point of view. Problems are not going to lie to what I have to say. In fact, I'm sure of it. The DEP regulation is the only controlling factor we have governing the elimination of sound in the turbine. It was never really written to take into account any of these sounds from the turbines. And I have that in a letter I've given you from the director of the Southeast Region of the DEP saying that in fact, didn't know what the regulation was written, and didn't know any of the sounds. And that Wind Tag conference that Al participated in, he was there, he was on the panel of that conference. At the end of that, Laurel Carlson, who is now, who was always with the DEP, but she helped in the regional office in Moss, and Marty Sueberg, who was the director, she came up with a conclusion, that what they had to do was change the metering character, the system of slow metering to fast metering. And more importantly, they realized that the amplitude modulation, that mush, 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 was never detected from their current regulation. They'd have to do something about that, whether they give a credit for it, add five decibels on the readings that they get or whatever. They never did that. Somehow this died. Because like Al says, if it's retroactive, this is going to make all kinds of financial reverberations throughout the Commonwealth. It's going to go down to the political aspect, you know? So, the DEP regulation, that our only controlling factor we have to dictate to the owner of the wind turbine, whether in fact the problem is his or ours, never really was an adequate sense of regulation. So it's like they built them wherever they wanted to. Now, there are times that the regulations do find a violation. And that's because it's a situation where it's a gross problem, really, really need to test to see how bad it is. Now, what's happened is because some of the communities have been tested, and they've found violations, somehow the regulation, the DEP regulation for the noise violation has been modified. And currently, I've been trying to get the DEP to stop that modification. What they did was, instead of letting it stream quiet with up and down, and then taking the loudest sound, now they're averaging the loudest sound. It cuts out four or five decibels off. They're averaging. And this is going to make everything incomparable. They have modified the ineffective regulation to make it even more ineffective to detect that mush, that magnitude, that, that magnitude implication. What I'm saying is, I doubt very much that we're going to find a violation here in Central with this testing, with the current law, the way it's written and the way it's been modified. Now, that's why Clinton, when they shut them down, it wasn't shut down the noise, it was shut down the nuisance claim. Judge Moriarty said, I don't care about the noise, this, this obviously constitutes a nuisance to people around. My part is found. Now, and I, I've tried to get a conversation. I'm talking to Laurel Carlberg, the DEP. She won't meet with me. Marty Sueberg refuses to meet with me to discuss this aspect of why they haven't modified the regulation. I don't know what it's going to take to get a meeting with them or let them face up to the fact that their current regulation gives a comp watch to the wind, wind, wind turbine industry to build these things indiscriminately too close to people, like they have in many communities. I don't know if it's ever going to happen, because it's shifted their emphasis from onshore to offshore. I guess they feel the heat at their feet, because there's a lot of legislation by now pending to try and get these things looked at more depth. One last point. Al said that back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we modified the contract with situatwind to shut the thing down at ten miles an hour or less from the southwest. It worked for a while, and I saw it shutting down, and then it stopped shutting down. I don't know whether something shifted and the magnetic declination up at the tower or whatever. Things are different. It's got to wait anymore. And, uh, the biggest thing you have to remember is, regardless of whatever the laws say, if it affects people, you can't let that go on. We build these green things. We built the noble idea, and I'm all for it, to try and clean the atmosphere up, generate some money and everything, but not when it's starting to affect some people it's supposed to benefit. How many people is supposed to be, is it okay? Twenty people are affected? Ten? Five? One? How many people is this justifiable to put the thing in place before we have to look at this as a community and say, we made a mistake. It's going to cost us this amount of money to rectify it. You can't just say, a minimum of people are affected, right? The town voted it in. We all make mistakes, and collectively, we are deceived by the wind industry. We have no protection from the parent laws. We have to do something about it, regardless of the cost. I implore you to at least shut this thing down at night during the summer. And just because I'm vocal about it in one little segment, and maybe my neighbors close to me jump into that, that emphasis I have and that spark, and maybe not as a strut versus I am about this, there are other people around the thing that don't want to complain for obvious reasons. They think that the real estate value is going to go down. So-
Okay. I, we've heard, we're going to talk to you again, I guess, in a couple weeks as well, and that's fine. You have a forum to talk here. I, I think we're kind of in this point right now, until we hear something from this testing, and then something would force us to go to them to make them make a change. And all of us know, I do not deny the fact that you guys hear something, and it's, it's, you know, keeping you guys up, and I, we all feel terrible for that. Um, I also know your neighbors, and they don't hear a thing. So it's really very, it's, it's strange, you know?
Some of my neighbors. Not all.
Right. Oh, right. We've had, there's other neighbors that are coming in.
You see some people that are sick, and they're puking over the side, and other people are helping. I want you to say that-
No, no, that's not how I started-
No, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. I said, you've got, I-
You have a difficult job. I don't envy the five of you.
Right. So, um-
But unfortunately, it's your job.
So the only comment that I'll, I'll make on what you just said is, if you find that there's a time where you think the reading should, the thing should be shut off and it's not shut off, then you've got to notify us. Because that's one thing that I don't think is acceptable. If, if it's blowing at ten miles an hour from the southwest and it's on, it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
But you see, I don't have access to the SCADA data, what's up at the hub at the Mercier. It's four hundred, two hundred and eighty-seven feet above the ground.
So it may in fact not be-
So what I see is a certain condition on the ground called shear effect. Quieter than the ground, that's noisy and produces enough of-
Well, just find the time, because we can get the reading from them.
Yeah, we could guess, um, retroactively, get any readings we want from, from them.
So if you say midnight tomorrow night-
June, June eighth was a problem. Here's, here's the-
I emailed Clint with Epsilon on this. He hasn't even returned my replies. He's saying, Clint, you should test during this condition. And I never heard a reply. And I'm supposed to be the neighborhood leader, the one who's the liaison between testing areas, and nobody answered my emails.
So, um, if we knew at a-
My personal will go out.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Al.
I was going to say, if, on a specific date, we can just ask situatwind to say, okay, on, you know, Thursday night, what was the, uh, what were the wind conditions from this time to that time at the turbine? And, uh-
Well, don't they give us a monthly report that tells us that?
Well, it's, it's like bazillion piece of data. They don't, they don't give us a monthly report, no.
You said you were woken up the last four nights or something?
Four nights, four out of six nights.
Could we look at the last week?
West, southwest, but that's-
Well, he'll look at it.
But that's what, that's what my phone says.
Doesn't matter. If you just say it was last Thursday night, he can look it up. He can tell you exactly where the wind speed was coming from and the-
Send emails.
Tell us.
Emails are recorded.
Okay.
I do them in the middle of the night when I'm waking up. Two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning.
Well, Al's going to look at what last week was, and we can take a look at it.
So you'd like to know what last week's wind conditions were during the night?
During the, during the evening, yeah.
And if it triggered the shut off at all?
And my neighbor also was the same.
It wasn't.
It wasn't. How do you know?
I asked already. Yeah, there was nothing.
There was no shut off, so it wasn't triggered, so we should-
It hasn't triggered shut off yet.
But then the caveat on is, I don't think any of this testing is going to show anything. Because I think, I think the regulations are ineffective to detect that noise. If that thing were to be a constant sound, like the air conditioner, it wouldn't annoy it. It's the surge of mush, mush. It's like three or four decibels above the noise.
Is there some sort of white noise machine that you could get that would block that out? Is there an air conditioner that you could put in there that would block out whatever that noise is? And I'm not speaking-
So, if I understand you correct now, I bought this house on the ocean, and the dog goes to listen to nature, and every night, and I want to block out the nature, because it's a noise that was artificially created to make generating money. And I'm going to ignore the housing. I might as well just sell my house and burn it to the ground and just change my whole, you want me to change my entire lifestyle and the things that I enjoy and love a seventy-three-year-old time?
You're, you're taking it a little further than I was trying to go.
Am I?
No, I understand what you're saying, but if you're not sleeping at night, is there some sort of thing that you can sleep?
Yeah, I can take Ambu. I take drugs prescribed by my doctor.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
I would just like to say that it strikes me that you have a lot of expertise in this area based on your experiences. Is, are there any hearings being held at the state level to talk about the standards that these wind turbines should meet, about citing of them? I mean, it strikes me as though even if you can't, I'm sorry to say this, save yourself, that, you know, this is information that I think that the state regulator should have.
There's a number, there's a number of bills that have been put forth by the House of Representatives and Senate, trying, uh, look into this, both from the point of view of a committee to study the health effects of it, and another one to change some of those regulations to say infrasound and amplitude modulation. I've testified many times myself before the state office, many by other people in communities all around the state out, but nothing ever comes out.
Sorry.
And all I can think of is the political, you know, uh, discipline behind the whole thing. This is, we don't want to do anything to impact wind turbines or make the laws so that they accurately depict the noise.
Sorry.
Again, and on the same level, I've tried to engage Marty Sueberg, the head of the DEP, in a conversation, to tell him about my, my, uh- in a conversation to tell him about my, my feelings about DEP regulations, which is shared by many people I know. And not just me, but registered acousticians will say that they appear before you free of charge to talk about it, other engineers, people around the country, around the world to feel this way about this regulation. And Marty Sueberg will not even return my call. I send him registered letters, and I never get a reply. This is the way our state legislators, look at this. If they ignore it, if they flip a little person down, the minority, and they hold them back from speaking out, problem is solved. And now they moved offshore because they know that it's getting hotter at their feet.
I'd like to just say one thing. I'd like to say that, I'd like to thank Mr. Doherty. He's a member of the study team that is studying the noise. He's been very effective at helping us coordinate with neighbors so that when, what we've set up is that when the conditions exist, then the people communicate with the town. Mr. Doherty, who has done a great job of alerting the neighbors that we've agreed to, that have agreed to have testing on their property. Because, you know, it's the middle of the night when the testing occurs, and we had one glitch where a neighbor across the street didn't know what was going on, called the police, and that created a problem. But we've done a really nice, I'd like to thank him for his help on this as we proactively try to study this and get the data.
All right. Thank you both. We'll move on and hopefully come to...
Thank you, George.
Yes. Sure. Okay, the next topic are some entertainment permits. Someone want to go through these? They can see better than me?
Can we get to the right page, Jeffy? We not having people forward for these?
No, we have people here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you just can't read them. The first one is Seaside Road, Paul and Bonnie Turcat.
Come on up.
Come on up. You can't read it?
I can, but I do all the talking.
Feel the Lord have air.
Would you like to come up? You want to stay in the background?
So you're, you want me to do this?
Oh, I can do it. So tell us what you want to do.
Well, so we're, we're new, or just moved into town, so Bonnie's been here, lived here before. And so we just built a house on Seaside Road. And I have a real estate business, so a group of real estate agents, and they've all been sort of part of the process of, you know, following the process of the house being built. And, you know, because we built it from, you know, from scratch there, so, you know, this is sort of a little bit of a celebration and, you know, getting through all that. Music wise, we're looking at a trio. It's an upright bass, two guitar players and vocals, so it's not, it's not anything that's going to be like, you know, rock music or anything of that nature. And we're talking, you know, 4:30 to 8 o'clock for the music. You know, some concerns about parking. It's probably going to be, you know, 40-plus people. It's hard to get a, get a real read who's going to show up. You know, a lot of these people are traveling an hour to come and visit, so I don't know what that, I don't know what the final number is, but we, Bonnie's got some people from...
Is it amplified music?
You know, probably lightly. I mean, it's acoustic instruments, you know, from what I understand. I mean, he might have a, might have a little bit of an electric guitar, but it's not, you know, it's not...
Not a rock band.
It's not rock music. It's not anything of that nature. And we've invited the neighbors. They're all welcome. I've got one response.
Are there any neighbors here? Any questions from the board? Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Paul and Bonnie Turcat?
Turcat.
Turcat, sorry. 61 Seaside Road for a private party with live music on June 29th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Question about, what about parking? Can we get some, something there in terms of having either, either along Egypt Beach Road or maybe use some of the parking, you know, you have the...
I'll get, right, Chief Stewart?
I can talk to you afterwards.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Welcome to town.
All right. Let me get to the next one.
Colleen Burke.
Burke and Molly Gould. And you have to come up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I am not Colleen Burke.
I was wondering which one was Colleen.
My name is Stephen Cronin. I live at 47 Marion Road Extension, and my daughter Sarah Cronin, who is a graduate of the class of 2019 at Citroen High School, this is one of her best friends, Molly Gould. Ms. Burke has apologized. She did have to work this evening, and she is a single mom, and has asked me to come and help her daughter out.
Right. So Molly, what are you doing?
We're having a party, and it's pretty much like, my mom calls it Rock the Watershed. And it's just, we're going to have two bands. It's from 2:00 to 10:00 July 6th, and we already sent, we have, what do we have? Oh, a police detail, and then we also have approved, like, parking at the high school. So like right along, like the staff parking, I don't know if you know that. And then we're going to have a police detail, or we paid for one, to just like have traffic go back.
Is it at your house?
Yes, our house.
Why don't you tell where you live and what it looks like?
So we live on 17 acres on Chief Justice Cushing Highway. It's right across the high school, kind of in the woods. We have animals and everything.
So there's not a lot of the Butters. She's deep in the woods.
Yeah, deep in the woods. And we already notified our neighbors. We sent out letters, so...
Is this a graduation party?
Part of, like, mix.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the other half?
The other half is like family and my mom and all her animal friends and all that stuff.
Good excuse to have a party.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
You said two bands. What kind of, I don't think you're going to have the same kind as the last group.
Yeah, we're, no, it's not, no, nothing. We're having acoustics, I think, too, but it's, it's amp, but it's not like crazy, and we're like deep in the woods, so I don't think, I mean, if there is noise complaints, I mean, they're free to let us know, but I don't know.
Well, Ms. Burke is, the musical will end by 9:00.
Okay.
Okay.
And I believe we have the police detail until 10:00. Well, I should say the family does.
Yeah.
Sean, any questions?
Well, you're in the woods, but you go so far back that you've come pretty close to Pheasant Hill Drive, don't you?
Yeah.
So as long as, you know, we're all here just to make sure you keep the peace with everyone and have fun at the same time.
Yeah.
That's all. But it sounds like you've crossed all your TV stars and all your eyes, so...
No questions, no?
Karen, Anne? You're a tough one. All right. Any questions from the audience?
If you don't approve this, she has to have it at my house.
Are you begging right now?
Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Colleen Burke and Molly Gould at 655 Chief Justice Cushing Highway for a private party with a band on July 6th, 2019, from 2:00 PM till 10:00 PM.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for going through the process.
All right. Let's get to the next page.
Next is Citroen Community Christmas and the recently retired Kim Stewart.
Saw Kim out there.
Good evening, everybody.
And how are you?
A lot of good parties to go to.
What's your party?
Our party is August 17th from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Susan Pippin House, which is 125 Manlot Road. We're having a cornhole tournament. We're, we're having the Doc Ellis Band, which I believe is four pieces. It's amplified. We've notified all the Butters. There were four. I have the letters. I gave Allison the sample of the letter, so I'll answer any questions you might have.
First, are there any Butters here? Questions?
Where are you going to set up for the band?
In the backyard.
In the back?
Which, but it's the animal shelter.
Oh, okay, so it's not going to be super visible from the road?
You won't see it from the road at all.
Okay. Because that kind of concerned me.
Yeah, nope. Nope.
Sean, anything?
Parking, all over the lawn.
The front, yeah.
Yep, good.
Police detail.
More?
The parking was my question. Sean stole it. Yeah, that's it.
Great. So three things. Number one, Citroen Community Christmas is one of the best organizations in town, so...
Thank you, sir.
Couldn't be for better. Number two, whenever we mention Susan Pippin, I can't tell you how much this woman did for the town. She was a selectman, she was on many boards, she started Citroen Community Christmas, she started 100 other things that you don't even know. So thank you for getting that house up and placing, and I think we all...
There's more to come. Just stay tuned.
Yeah, so she, she was a great, a great resident of the town. And third, you just retired?
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You did a great job here, and we hate to see you go, but I'm sure you're...
Eh, I'm not going far. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none? Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Citroen Community Christmas, Kim Stewart, for a fundraising event with the Doc Ellis Band at the Susan Pippin House, 125 Manlot Road on August 17th, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I think we ought to consider a selectman teaming in the cornhole tournament.
Yeah, you guys are all right. Thank you.
All right. And the next one is...
Mike Bullman.
Mr. Bullman.
Hi, everybody. Mike, how are you?
Hi.
Good. My name's Mike Bullman. I am on the Board of Directors of Salt Shore Peer Recovery. We're located at 50 Cole Parkway down in Citroen Harbor. We're about to embark on our fourth annual fundraiser. This one, it will be the second annual Recovery Rocks, and it's at Armoryna down on Jericho Road. I think a lot of you came. If you didn't come last year, I'm here to invite you to come this year. It was a good event. It raises money for peer recovery, which is important to our town.
Questions?
I didn't see it in the backup, but last year, I think you used the parking at Pier 44. Is that in this application again, or have we talked about that?
Yeah, we have asked if we could use Pier 44 again, and Darber's also offered his parking lot as well.
Okay. It's a wonderful event, and I'm coming this year.
You are, thank you.
Built the same objects. Thank you.
More?
Nope, I'm good.
Karen? So not a great event. We went, been the last couple of years.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service, and you can use the parking lot at Pier 44.
Perfect.
And 6:00 to 10:00 on August 22nd, so...
Right.
Great. Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Mike Bullman, 20 Jericho Road, for a private party with a band on August 22nd, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion?
Isn't allowed to do that.
Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
You're tough. Thank you very much. See you on the 22nd.
We have great parties in this town.
Yes. All right, we have one more. Nope, these are all one day, and these, this is the yacht club. Anyone here from the yacht club?
No. I have to recuse myself, Mr. Curran.
Hello, good evening.
How are you?
Hi. Lauren Ray here on behalf of the Citroen Harbor Yacht Club. I'm here tonight to ask for entertainment permits for various upcoming events, and I believe you all have the list in front of you.
We do.
I don't know if you want me to read them, or, okay.
Are these the same events as you've had?
Same events as last year, yep.
Same exact ones? I see a bunch of weddings at the end, so those are new?
Correct. Those are new, and those will all be inside the clubhouse. We have a, you have a DJ or a band, and everything will be inside, indoors.
Right. Is that more weddings in the past?
A lot of weddings this fall, yeah. We only had one this, this spring, but a lot in the fall.
So this is, I'll just read them real quick. You have Dave Matthews Beach, a beach party, a 4th of July for the kids, another kids' party on the 10th of July, cocktail party on the 19th of July, the Luminaria, and then the fashion show in August with a Labor Day party as well. I think those are the records. Any questions?
I have one question. Is the, is the...
Sean, any question?
He said no.
Yeah.
Is the live streaming with the concert with the speaker, is that new? I remember that last year. I know. Something we've never done before, so there's a private beach at the end of our parking lot, and they're going to hook up just a speaker and livestream the concert. It's just a speaker, or is it video? It's just a speaker. No, just a speaker. No video, nothing, just a speaker. Gotcha. And I have obtained the Butters list, and I've sent letters out to everybody in the neighborhood. Which way are you pointing the speakers? Out towards the water? Probably towards the ocean, I would think. Okay. I thought that was different.
Explain that, yeah, explain that a little more.
Yes, I want to.
Where's the band playing? Explain that, yeah, explain that a little more.
Yes, I want to.
Where's the band playing?
There were, it's, well, it's live streaming a concert, a Dave Matthews concert.
Oh, oh.
That's in Illinois.
Gotcha.
Oh, Dave Matthews isn't coming.
So he's not coming?
Yeah, he's not coming to the yacht club, no.
Because we were gonna do an inspection.
No, they're just gonna livestream the concert.
Gotcha.
With just one, like a Bose speaker.
Okay. Are there any butters here? Seeing none. Um, any other questions? Any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll do it if I can find it. We'll just have to re, make it up.
I think you have to, so...
I'll, I'll do it.
Sorry.
It's up here. No, it's just, um, move to approve the outdoor entertainment permits for the following events at the Cituate Harbor Yacht Club. Can't we just say it's listed? Do you want to read them?
I think you gotta read them.
All right. Uh, Friday, June 28th, the Dave Matthews Beach Party from 8:00 to 11:00 PM. Thursday, July 4th, the Kids' Party on the lawn from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Wednesday, July 10th, another Kids' Party, um, in the pool area from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Friday, July 19th, a cocktail party, um, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Friday, August 2nd, the Luminaria Party from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Wednesday, August 14th, a fashion show. Um, there's no, it, the music's inside, so there's no time really indicated on that one. Saturday, August 31st, Labor Day, um, singer with amplification from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And then Saturday, September 14th, September 21st, and September 28th, Saturday, October 5th, and Sunday, October 19th, all indoor wedding, with either a DJ or a band, inside.
Second by...
Second.
Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's four, nothing. Ms. Cantfield recused herself. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, have a great summer.
Thank you. All right. Now we are...
The fun one.
Oh, we have to do another one. Do we have to do another one? No, nobody has a backup.
Nope. The next item is an acceptance of a Library Foundation donation. Ginny Ayers and Prue?
They travel in a pack.
Come on up, Jessie, come on up.
Yeah, this is, this is all library.
Foundation.
Foundation.
Karen, you wanna leave this one?
Yes. I'd like to introduce, um, Skip DeBrusk, Gary Fernquist, Kelly Butterworth, and Joe McNally are also here, joining Don Nelson and myself.
And Peter Lincoln.
Um, oh, and Peter, sorry. Peter Lincoln. And, um, you all know Jessie. Um, just wanted to give you an update. Um, in addition, first of all, some housekeeping. We have two memorandum of agreements that we tend to bring in as we get signed. Both of them happen to be for, um, an existing and former foundation member. Um, P, uh, Mike and Ann Cuneo have, are naming a book stack. Mike was a, when I say longtime member, nine years of taking notes and donating his time to the Library Foundation. Um, Peter and Suzanne Lincoln are also naming a bookshelf, a book stack, sorry. Um, and so we have their things that I, their agreements that I will leave for you all to sign.
You can just give them to Michelle when you have.
Yep, I'll do that. Um, and there are more coming. We're just kinda starting now that we're slowing down a little bit to catch up with some housekeeping. Um, we have a group, also, a group of longtime friends of Greg Moynihan have agreed to donate 15,000 to name the small conference room in his memory, which is, was in the paper recently, which we're really excited about. So we'll be bringing that and others in as they come in. Um, we had the gala on June 7th to kind of celebrate that, you know, almost 10-year campaign that we're winding down this month. Um, it featured Steve Kirkchen, the multiple Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist for The Globe, who is specialized in covering the Gardner Museum Heist, so that was a lot of fun. Generated a lot of excitement, and it was a rousing success. Um, it was chaired by Elizabeth Henry and Amy Barnes, and a colossal amount of work went in, um, by the gala committee, which consisted of Emily Anderson, Amy Lanell, Trish Griffiths, Marla Manier, Storm Eckelhofer, Kelly Butterworth, and it raised almost $46,000.
Wow, that's great.
So we were, yeah, that was a big one, and we're really excited about that. Um, it was nice to kinda go out on a bang. Um, not that we're out. Um, we also wanna thank, there were a lot of local businesses that sponsored the event and donated auction items, and we're really grateful for that. Um, and Jessie, obviously, giving their library support was huge. Um, finally, as a result of all of the hard work and countless hours that have been put on by each and every member of the foundation over the years, and it's rotated, um, we're excited to be able to present the town with another $250,000 tonight.
That's awesome.
Which brings our total up, donated funds thus far, up to 1.4 million. So we're very excited about that.
Thank you.
Um, we do have additional pledge payments that are coming in, and we will make, you know, and be able to make another donation if, as, as, if and when they come in, we'll hand those over. Um, but it's not, I mean, we still have another week. If anybody wants to get on the beautiful donor board, it's not too late, but we are winding it down. Other, there's time, I think after 10 years, it's time for other, there are other causes in town that are gonna maybe need some funds, so.
That's great.
Great. Karen?
I might as well say something. I, I've said it many times before, but I, it can't be overstated, the amount of dedication and accomplishment that this collective body of, of people that have worked on this. So, um, again, thank you. It was a great event, the gala, um, and that was hard work as well. Um, and I just, I, I did ask Nancy Holt, and, uh, we couldn't verify it, but we're pretty sure this is the largest donation to, um, a town anything collectively ever. So you guys should be commended for that, and you are definitely thanked.
Thank you. It's been a lot of work, um, but it's a, it's a good cause.
To the best in 23 years, there has not been any that I know of that have even come close. Thank you, all your efforts.
What do you think, Dad?
Just wanna say thank you. It's a beautiful building, and the, the life in that building is just wonderful, and it couldn't have happened without the Library Foundation and Jessie and all the people who worked so hard. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Great job. They're evolving these libraries, and it is, it is really, it, I think all of us get a lot of energy when we go into the building and see the myriad of different ways it's being used these days, so it's...
Well, from birth to death.
Right? You know? Yes. Always goes to the library.
Other towns copy what you've done?
Um, yes.
Wouldn't be surprised.
Um, and, and we copied some ideas from other fund, Hopkinton started with a Thousand Homes program, um, but I don't think anyone, I'm not sure, even Hingham started and got approved, but they had a smaller goal. I mean, yeah, it's, other, Shrewsbury's done it, there are other towns have done it, um, to varying degrees.
The, the MBLC is very impressed by what they've done with fundraising, and, uh, really very few foundations have been able to raise this amount of money for capital campaigns, so it's really impressive work.
So much so, they put less ball on their commissioners' board.
Yes.
So Ginny, just explain what stopping means. So, there's no more actively, actively campaigning, but all the, all the people that have kinda donated things over time, that'll dribble in over the next...
So the found, I, I'm, thank you for asking that. The foundation is not going away. The foundation existed before this Capitol campaign, and its primary mission is not to run a Capitol campaign. Um, its primary mission is to support kind of, you know, capital needs of the library that don't get funded by the town budget. Um, I mean, you know how tight those funds are.
And help the library and do her job.
Help the library and do her job, yeah. Um, so, we are winding down the Capitol, the Building for the Future Capitol Campaign, which means that we are not actively soliciting for that anymore. Um, we will continue, people have made pledge, pledges, and some of those are current, some might not be so current, so, but as those come in, we will continue to collect those on behalf of the campaign, but after June 30th, you know, new donations that come in, we'll just kinda start to rebuild the foundation coffers the way they were, and be able to put the money towards directly into the library.
Great. So, one second then. Uh, so, a couple of things. One little different thing for this is we've, you've actually donated $1,721 more than the outstanding debt, so that amount of money is going to go towards, uh, lowering the tax levy for everybody, so you save everyone in the town 21 cents on their taxes for that $1,700, so, um, good for that.
Is that it?
I, I will say, I had no idea that you would raise, I didn't think you would raise this much money.
Some people doubted it.
Yes.
It's, it's a phenomenal accomplishment.
I mean, I think you blow every other, um, event to try and raise money by tenfold, you know, that, that the town's ever gotten. So, um, kudos to the whole group, and like you said, it's been 10 years, so Karen was on the committee, and there's, there's 100-plus people that have been involved in this, and we can't name them all, but thank you all very much, and, and the group here also. So, it's, it's impressive. It's very impressive. So, we got a great building out of it, and we pulled the community together out of it, and, uh, it was all, all good.
Sean, can you just say one more thing? You know, we recognized the four young gentlemen that were here before us, and we said, this
is what makes this town so great, and this, the library, as well. You know, we have great fire, police, and all that, but thank you. You make this town a better place for all your efforts, really. I can share the work.
I, I'd like to point, I mean, Skip DeBrusk and Gary Fernquist are among the people whose terms have expired. We, our bylaws, we can have 13 active members at a ti, I mean, 13 official members at a time, but we're so fortunate, you know, Les Ball has been in here a million times, John Kalopolis, you know, um, these people, their terms are up, and they still come back and volunteer and help because this is just, they, they are so passionate about what the library provides for the town. So, we're very lucky, it's, it's way more than just...
And the town's right here. Pam, did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, um, you know, 1.4 million dollars is huge. I send, uh, an email off to Ginny, um, as soon as the town gets ready to close our fiscal year-end, or we go up to renew our bond or our ban that we, you know, we, we have a $12 million loan out there. They've definitely exceeded, uh, the potential of fundraising, and our residents should be, um, over the top. They're saving 21 cents, but look at how many people are saving 21 cents instead of paying extra, you know, 1.4 million dollars.
Is that...
So the 21, let me clarify, the, the 21 cents is only for the $1,700 that was above and beyond, not the 1.4 million. That was all, that's all dollar-for-dollar out of the tax, you know, didn't have to be paid for the tax. But this is just the fact that you've given more money with this check than the, than we've had to borrow.
Than you expected.
Right.
Than you expected.
Yeah.
And, and you continue to, um, hopefully give us a little bit more.
Make a pledge, famous people.
Thank you for answering me, and thank you for, you know, talking to me about where you're funding the money. I've spoke to some of the people on what banks they put it in, and their interest rates, and what they're doing with it. So I just wanna commend you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Pam.
Yeah, because I think there, we did some unofficial math. I mean, I think the one point, you know, 1.5 approximately is like 40 bucks total, so I mean, the, I'm sorry, the library project of 5 million was like 46 bucks a year for the annual.
One year, yeah.
You know, and I think ours was maybe initial $12, like, if you added the, do the whole 1.5 million. Um, yeah, so I think there were some savings above and beyond the 12 cents.
Yeah, we just have to note it because it goes above and beyond...
Right.
What the debt was. Great, can I have a motion?
Please.
To accept a donation to, oh, I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation provided by the library, Cituate Library Foundation.
Motion by Ms. Cantfield, in the record, please.
Yes.
What is the amount?
Yeah, you wanna say the amount?
$250,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. These are the easy votes. Humanists. Thank you.
Thank you. I've enjoyed this conversation so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Okay, moving right along, we have, um...
Chief Stewart.
Oh, wait, first, before we get to this one, we have a common vehicle license. Is, uh, Tony Chen here?
Yep.
If you'd like to come up, sir?
Yes, sure.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Well, we can, I'm not, have you come up quick. Go ahead.
Yeah, let's get him.
Yep, have a seat.
All right, thank you.
There we go.
So did you just give your name and your address?
Uh, Tony Chen, 31 Seawash Street, Quincy.
Okay.
Yep.
Hold on for one second.
Yep, I just gotta find our paperwork.
Michelle, do you need that address, or do you, you'll just get it off the tape, or do you want it again?
For, I'm sorry.
For Mr. Chen.
For Tony, I'll get it off the tape.
Okay. Great. So tell us about your, um, your business.
Our business in nature is a bagel, coffee, and espresso, some of those type stuff, yep. So we make it every day fresh, so we have about six other locations, so...
So, do you own six other locations?
Yeah, I own all of them.
Oh, good.
Yes.
And this is a Gunther Tooties?
Yes.
And it's going, we all know, but...
The old Morning Glory, yeah, 52 Countryway.
Right.
Yep.
The old Morning Glories. There's thousands of people watching this right now, so...
Oh, thank you.
This is your, this is your marketing...
I can't wait to go. When does it open?
When is it open?
Uh, next Monday.
Next Monday?
Oh, great.
You might see a couple of us on there.
Sean is taking you there three times a day. He's gonna walk there.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner, Sean.
Yeah, we put a lot of time and effort to it, yeah, so...
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to know when we could get through the door. What are the hours?
Uh, we open 5:00 to 6:00 right now.
5:00 to 6:00?
Yep. 5 o'clock in the morning to 6:00 at night.
10:00?
Yes.
Monday through Fri...
Monday through Friday, and weekend, we probably do 6:00 to 5:00.
6:00 to 5:00.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a drive-through window? I haven't seen this.
There is a drive-through window, yes. Yep.
Karen, any?
It's a brand-new drive-through window, so you don't really...
Do you go around the building?
Yes, yep.
Frank?
Welcome to Cituate.
Oh, thank you so much.
The building looks great.
Yeah.
I just, it's such a, you did such a nice job with the design. It fits in so well. I, thank you for...
No, thank you.
Being respectful for that area.
Yeah.
Are you hiring?
Yes. Yeah, we, uh, we hired a bunch of people from Cituate, too, yeah.
Great.
So we probably hired about 20 people so far, probably...
Right.
Yeah, most come, yeah.
Do you need a 12-year-old?
Uh, no.
Labor laws.
And he's 15.
She's 15. Trust me. She looks old for her age. Um, anything, Chief, or no? Unquick, possible. Can I have a motion?
Right. Move to approve a common vehicle license for Cituate Bagel Incorporated, due business as Gunther Tooties, located at 52 Countryway, Cituate, Mass, pending final Board of, uh, Board of Health approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Good luck. See you Monday.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, sorry I went out of order there. The next topic is the discussion on the 4th of July, holiday plans. Chief Stewart? And Mark Thompson. Deputy. Bodybuilder.
Well, got the tools.
Okay. What do you guys wanna do on the 4th?
Yeah, as you know, over the last 10 years, we've made leaps and bounds in Humrock, not just in Humrock, but all over town, with, uh, doing away with the bonfires, and when we did away with the bonfires, we guaranteed people that were coming back with another idea. We came back with the campfires the year later, and we have tremendous success with that. Everybody cooperates with it. They're much safer. And they don't create the attractive nuisance that the four-story bonfires did back in the days. And what it has resulted in is families on the beach, toasted marshmallows with a safe fire, controlled conditions. And so two years ago, I came before the board at the time. And I'd asked- our whole problem down there was the beach opening, the public beach opening in Humrock. And I'd asked permission to close that beach. And when I first went before you, I said that I indicated that this wasn't going to be a permanent thing. And that, you know, once we get control of things down there, I plan on opening it up and doing exactly what is happening on Sand Hills Beach and Peggydy Beach and open it back up to families. The last two years, we've had success in that prior to closing that beach, it wasn't unusual to transport a dozen or more kids, and I mean fourteen, sixteen, seventeen-years-old, couldn't even tell us their names because of alcohol intoxication. Last two years, pretty much nothing down there as a result of that. Most of the kids that were problems down there weren't from Citewatt and weren't from Marshfield. They were getting dropped off from other jurisdictions. And a lot of the troublemakers, the people who were getting arrested down there, weren't from anywhere near here. They weren't Citewatt, they weren't Marshfield. So, the last two summers, we enjoyed a nice closed beach. But we had hundreds of parents and kids and grandparents coming down there, hoping to be able to go out there. And what I'd like to do this year is open the beach back up so that we can have parents and kids and grandparents. Now, we're going to have a number of officers on the beach, we're just not going to allow the teenagers to gather the way that they had. You know, it's- I think it's manageable. I think it's definitely manageable this year. I'd like to take a chance on doing that. My feeling is that come eleven o'clock, that we'll clear the beach anyways. Generally, the parents with the kids have already left anyway. So at that point, we're going to make it so that the beach is closed, basically at eleven o'clock. And that it'll stay closed till six o'clock the following morning. So that will prevent teenagers or young adults from coming and taking that over, thinking that now that the parents have left, it's their time. That's not going to happen. It's not going to happen again. So, uh, so that is what- I'd like permission to go ahead and open that beach up. And with the idea that come eleven o'clock at night, we'll probably clear what's remaining on the beach, unless it's very minor and we're not having any other issues, and then we might let it go to midnight.
So Mike, just specifically, you're asking us to open the beach up till eleven o'clock at night? And how are you going to enforce just families going on the beach? Are you going to-
If a group of kids hangs out, there's going to be more police officers than there will be teenagers on that beach. And, you know, if- if there's a couple teenagers that want to come and sit and enjoy it, that's fine. But when it gets to be ten or fifteen, I'm going to be standing right in the middle of them. They're not going to enjoy that.
So are we going to post the rules, you know, whatever we agree on tonight? I just want everyone to be clear that this is what can and can't happen.
Exactly. And I'm scheduled to go on WATD to get that message out, as I have previous years, just about every year for the last several years. And I'll talk to Ruth about, you know, getting that in the paper as well. Peggydy Beach is a perfect example of how this should work. And, you know, come eleven o'clock, it's pretty much clear. And what isn't clear is manageable.
So you used to put those Jersey Bear areas. Are you doing any of that at the entrance by Sand Caff-? Nothing? It's going to have open access?
It's been open.
Okay, just the first year?
You know, we've had officers at the beach opening. And basically, when you came down to the beach opening, you could go left or right on the seawall. But that hundred yards either way was off limits. So if you had a party to go to down the way, or you wanted to keep walking on the seawall, you could do that. You know, we had good conversations with people over the last couple of years. And I assured them that, you know, within a couple of years, we're going to end up opening it. And I'd like to be able to do that for the residents of North Marshfield and Humrock.
Questions?
No, you asked mine. Mine was more about patrolling than- yeah.
I just want to say, I mean, we followed your advice on the closure and your professional experience tells us that, you know, if you think this is- it's okay, and I would be-
I think it's okay much the way, you know, once we turned around and we told the residents down there what they could have in place of bonfires. They abided by it. And they've been more than cooperative with it, and that's why we've had successes down there.
Right.
I just remember being on the board when you shut it down, and I thought the world was coming to an end. People down there, just it was unbelievable how we could stop it. But very shortly after, you know, we got reports that they were thanking you and the town. And it returned to a really family atmosphere. So to share Karen's thoughts, I agree. If you think it's time to maybe let up just a little bit, but keep your presence there, I'm all on board, whatever you guys think.
My only concern is, again, I don't want people to say the beaches are open, and all of a sudden, everybody thinks we're going to have the Trojan horses burning on, you know, on the beach again. So I think people have to know that bonfires are still off, it's just campfires and, you know-
We go around with the Fire Department, we distribute brochures to every home in Humrock. Like I said, we generally put a story in the Mariner and Ledger, and I usually follow it up on WATD.
If we post signs just at the entrance?
Yeah.
So people know. I think that's- you know, if we get them up so people going to the beach this weekend see it too, then it'll be-
Who has a question?
Post office.
Sorry. It's Karen?
Have you seen a shift in the crowd go elsewhere since, you know, from Humrock to somewhere else?
Well, that was some of the concern when we first did this, is where they're going to go. Are they all going to come up to Peggydy Beach? Are they going to go down to Rexham? The other thing that we did last year is with light towers, we lit up the dunes between Old Mouth Road and Rexham Beach parking lot. That was a notorious place for the kids to be able to hide and drink. And by lighting it up, they didn't have their security like they were. You know, it was very dark in there. It was very difficult to send, you know, ten guys in from Citewatt and ten guys in from Marshfield and squeeze them out and get rid of them. We would chase them all night. So Marshfield got three light towers, we got three light towers, and you could play football out there.
You're doing that this year as well?
You can't drink out there now.
But they haven't gone to mine it or anything like that?
No, these kids weren't from Citewatt.
Okay.
So I don't know if they've gone to Plymouth or they've, you know, they're just- they know that Humrock's not what it used to be, and it's not going to ever be what it used to be.
Good. Thank you.
So do you need a- Jim, what do we need to do? Do we need to make a motion or?
I don't think so. We didn't last year there.
I think we did, yeah.
No.
So just our approval at this meeting?
Yep.
Yeah. Good idea.
So do we all agree?
Yes.
Okay, so just to put in the record that the board voted in favor of Chief Stewart's plan for Humrock, or actually for all the beaches this Fourth of July?
Third of July.
Third of July. Third of July.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
You see? All right, moving right along, we are on discussion and a vote of drain layers licenses. I don't think they're going to be here, so.
If the everything's in place, do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Will the board of selectmen vote to approve the drain layers license for Silverado Construction Incorporated?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karen. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, five to zero. And the next one is-
Election workers.
Down here somewhere.
Oh, no. This must be a renewal corporation.
Move to approve the renewal of drain layers license to Pond Corp.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Right, next item for vote and discussion is the Republican election workers. Democrats' last meeting.
New West Indian Packet.
Yeah, I saw that. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Do we have to-
Do we have to read them?
No, I don't think so.
No.
No, no, no. Let me just do the list. Okay. Move to appoint election poll workers from the Republican list approved by the Republican Town Committee.
Second by-
Second?
Ms. Conley! Hey!
Another country, Hertha.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get that in the paper, Ruth.
Karen Conley's motion.
Seconded something last meeting.
She did a great job. The next one are some-
One days?
One-day wine and malt licenses.
I think I nominate Ms. Conley to do it. Okay. It's in the paper too.
I think I've got it. Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to tailor-made bartenders for an event at the Citewatt Maritime Center on June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, from six p.m. to ten p.m.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
To tailor-made bartenders for an event at the Citewatt Harbor Community Building on June twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, from five p.m. to nine p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
To tailor-made bartenders for an event at the Kennedy Country Gardens on June twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, from six p.m. to ten p.m.
Second.
I think that was amended to five to nine in the- we got a secondary- oh, we did? Wait, no, I'm sorry. Did you say five to nine?
Five to nine.
I retract my correction. Mine says six to ten.
It says six to ten in the scan and five to nine on the so- is it five to nine?
And then the piece of paper has five to nine. All right. Five to nine. I'll amend it.
Michelle, look at her first.
We could just say midnight, and then they're covered.
You're funny.
I'm the funny guy, okay?
Oh, okay. Well, I'm not amending that. Unamended. Unamended.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield. Further discussion? Just to note, this is one of the three events that we- that we- that you guys passed. The weddings that he had booked when- when it came before us back in whatever that was, April.
And finally to-
Vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero.
And to re- a restaurant for an event at the Citewatt Maritime Center on June twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, from four p.m. to eight p.m. Second.
Second by Ms. Karen. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, five to zero. Okay, now we are on the discussion and assign the liaison positions. So I'm sure you have all been studying this. It's our last meeting. I think we assigned a few of them to the chair. And there are some others here. So why don't, um, why don't I just run through them and you guys say?
Good idea.
If you want to do it. So the ones that we have to redo are John's. So Karen, those are going to fall to you unless somebody else wants to do it, and then go from there. So the advisory committee, that is me, the Affordable Housing Trust, that was John. Does someone want to do it, or do you want to do it?
I'll do it.
Okay, so that'll be Karen Conley. American Animal Control Board, that was Sean also.
When do they meet?
They don't meet that often.
Then I'll do it. Wait, I'll trade you. I know the drill.
That's Karen Conley as well. Beach Commission, Karen, you had that last year?
I'm happy to stay on that. Unfortunately, they always meet on our nights, so, but anyway.
Oh, they do.
Does somebody else?
I'll take it.
Oh, Sean's willing to take that one.
All right, we'll leave that one with Karen then. Beautification Commission, I had it last year.
I can take it. I mean, I'm not- I'm a volunteer. It's not a-
Oh, do you go anyways?
No. No, I do my- I do the island. I do the island.
Best island in Citewatt.
Thank you, Sean.
Do you want to do it?
My friend. Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's- I'm a volunteer. I'm not- yeah. Yeah, why don't you put me on?
It's pretty light lifting. Okay, so we'll put Maura on that.
That one I didn't know.
Port of Health, Sean, you want to keep Port of Healthy one?
Yes, I'll stay there. Just talking about some flowers.
Bylaw Review Commission, do we even have?
I'll do that because there is no- there's no one on the committee.
Do we have enough yet?
Well, nobody ever comes in to apply for it.
Okay.
We did have one person, but they never had quorum. They never meet.
Okay, Karen will do that one. Cable television.
I'll keep it.
Okay. Capital planning.
They're in flux.
Karen, you want to do that?
Yeah, they're in flux, so it's a good time if somebody else wants to take over because they're changing over-
Do you have any interest for capital planning?
Sure.
Okay.
All righty.
Coastal Advisory Commission, so Maura and John shared that.
I'll help you, Maura, if you want to.
That'd be great.
Just let me know when you can go.
Commissions on disability? Anybody have?
Do we know what nights they-
Yeah, what night do they meet?
I don't think they have a regular meeting that I know of that kind of meet.
I'll go if- I've never done it unless someone else- unless you want to, Maura, Karen, Aaron.
I'm just looking at the other ones.
You want to switch them up?
I'll do that one. And then CPC. I did it last year. I don't know if I'm doing it again. I don't know if I can share it with somebody. Do you want to stay involved?
I'll back you up if you want.
Okay, so why don't Karen and I do that? Unless- does someone else want to do it?
No.
Do you want to do it?
I would defer to a resident expert on that one.
Do you want to do it or not?
No, no, Karen, it'd be great to have you do that.
All right. Conservation, Maura, do you want to keep doing that? Do you want to-
Sure.
Council on Aging?
I'd like to keep it if no one else wants it.
Economic Development?
I wouldn't mind taking that because we're working on some things, unless you want to split it. I'm- I'll share. And I offered to do that Citewatt Harbor resilience thing that's kind of like meshing into that, so.
Okay, so why don't we-
Well, do you want to keep them together, or do you- No, no, I think having two different people is not a bad idea. Okay. Yeah, I've been sort of involved. They've started and just to let you guys know, the Economic Development Commission is taking a real lead on North Citewatt Village and just trying to come up with some strategic short, long, medium, and long-term plans to help sort of revitalize that area. So I've been involved in those discussions already.
Okay, so Karen will be on that. Karen Campfield, no, just Karen Campfield.
Karen. Can't say Karen C. either.
All right, where was it? Financial forecasting, I'll do that again. Historical Commission?
I'll take it if someone else does. I've never done it, so.
Sean, Housing Authority, Maura, do you want to-
Going out with a bang.
Keep on doing that one, or you want to pass?
Sure, no, it's fine.
Anyone else? So if any- let me just take a temperature here. I think anyone's willing to do anything here, so if there's something you want to do, just speak up because I think anyone will change or swap. So does anyone want to do Historical Commission, or what did I just do? Housing Authority?
Housing. No, I'll keep it aligned with Affordable Housing sort of-
Library Trustees? Karen, you want to give that?
I'll stay.
Planning Board? That was you last year.
Wait, Public- wait, where are we? Oh, Planning Board. I'm happy to keep it. It'll help with the Council on Aging and-
I'm doing the Plymouth County Advisory Committee, public building. Sean, you like that one?
I'll stay, and if I need help, Karen.
Well, I'm going to be attending because of the Council on Aging.
All right.
For those- for that topic.
Okay.
So, in that capacity, but not as-
Rep Commission, I'll keep that. Sean?
I'll back you up. You always go, but feel free to call me, so.
School Committee?
Keep it.
Yeah, unless someone- I don't mind doing it unless someone else wants to.
I am actually interested in that role if- because I have-
That's a big commitment.
It is a big commitment. That's the only reason I'm hesitating.
They need you.
Yeah, well.
Do you want to keep doing it, or do you want me to do it with her, or?
You can do it if you want. That's a lot of meetings, Karen.
I know. That's why I'm thinking I- I-
That's what I'm saying, just planning that council.
Yeah, no, I don't have time for that.
Well, let's be realistic. We're all the liaisons for about a dozen committees, so you can only- you can't go to all meetings.
I can't.
Right, but those are three big ones where-
That would be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, yeah. With the school committee putting that MSBA application in, someone has to really keep an eye on that.
They won't talk about it at the meetings.
Well-
Yeah. All right, I'll do it with Maura.
I'll do it.
Or whatever.
You guys can share it.
Okay, so Karen and I will do that.
All right.
Chamber of Commerce?
I'll do that.
Maura? Shellfish?
I'll stay with it.
You sure?
Wish you want it.
I'll swap you for library.
We'll be eating oysters pretty soon.
Sister City?
I'm excited about that.
I'll do the Sister City.
Because now you're, you know, indoctrinated.
Yeah, you're an expert now.
South Shore Coalition, Maura and Sean did that last time?
I cannot do that one because I'm actually-
It's fine, I can just keep it.
On the image of safety.
Keep it that way.
All right. Street Acceptance, I do that one. Traffic Rules? Sean, you want to do that still, or anyone else want to do that?
Unless someone else does.
Veterans? I did that. Actually, I don't think I met. I'll stay on that one. Water Resource? Karen, you did that?
Do you want me to do it? I- yeah, Karen, I think can take that one. Okay, yep, that's fine.
Karen Conley? Can do that.
Thank you.
Waterways, you want to stand that, Sean?
Yes, please.
Widow War? Maura and I are doing that. And ZBA?
I do not want that. Pass.
Give that to Karen.
Well, no, I'll take it.
I said pass.
Yeah.
Well, Maura hasn't picked a single committee, so it's like-
I've kept everything.
Fifteen-two, fifteen-three.
Forty-five, I think.
I can do ZBA.
Well, let me take the first, and then if I can't go, or if some-
Yes, share it.
Yeah.
I should probably go. Jeez Louise.
And then once we look at the list and see where it goes-
Hook my eye out.
Right, if it's all out of whack, then, yeah.
I know.
All right. That's it. All right, so, um, other business?
Other business.
Oh, look at the time.
I am so happy.
It's on time. Who's the best- who's the best lord of the chair? All right, Liaison Reports. Karen, we are not starting with you. We'll start with you.
Yeah, you know what? I did go to the CPC meeting because there are a couple of things on the agenda. Tony couldn't be there because I think he was going to Ireland. And I won't do all the notes, but Lawson Green is coming along. They did not qualify for the housing tax credits they hoped for on the first go-around, but they didn't expect to. They're now on the second go-around. They're more confident that it's likely to happen. Unfortunately, during that time, the amount of the project has increased from eight-point-two to nine-point-six million. But the good news is the state apparently is prepared to give communities who have a strong local commitment to affordable housing more leeway. So they seem pretty confident. Mike Kuciara, he's the developer, would like to come in and talk to this board. And I told him I would bring it up and ask to put him on the agenda at some point over the next couple of weeks. Because there are some important things coming up. They did get the HUD approval, I believe, to do a long-term lease, Jim?
Please say, yeah.
Yeah, for the land. There was some question as to whether it was subdivisible or not. But at any rate, the good news is the Wapteq playground will be done by the time school is back. They already broke ground on it like a week ago, so I think that's good news. And it's a good stuff. Gary Meyerson, the Chair of the CPC, is moving to the shipyard in Hangum, so he can't be the Chair anymore. So we have a new Chair, at least on interim basis.
Dan Fennelly.
Dan Fennelly, thank you. I love Dan. And Skylar Chick, our new member, is an interim Vice Chair. So there are two openings on that committee, or maybe three at large. So this board is going to have to, you know, deal with that.
Good.
But it was a good meeting, and things are moving along. That's all I have to say.
Now, I just can- may I ask Michelle a question at this point in time? Have we advertised for committee and board appointments yet? Okay, okay.
What if we see some applications, not-
Not a ton?
Not a ton, but we're organizing the books now, hopefully July nineteenth, July twenty-third.
We'll start. Okay, so we still need CPC, okay. We did say that the deadline was the twenty-first. Can we extend it a week or something?
Yeah, they're still trickling in.
Okay.
Twenty-first of-
So don't be afraid if you haven't put your applications in.
Yeah, I could get something out there. Yeah, I could get something out there.
That'd be great.
Well, the Chair should also be out there trying to recruit people, I think, you know, to gauge their interest because just putting an ad or a newspaper article doesn't necessarily bring the people
Well, let's, you know, put on Facebook, right, on our Sean?
No, not, not at this time, Tony, no.
Karen?
Like, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me start my watch.
Just start your watch, all right, I'll, I'll pass, I did actually hear from a bunch of the committees. So, Council on Aging, Thursday, Planning Board Meeting this Thursday will be the major site administrative review for the senior center concerning the scenic gardens and stormwater and I believe that's held at, is gonna be at the Public Safety Complex. They've also asked for some help and I, on, I don't know if this is, this is a ma, a technical question. They produce a newsletter, as does the library and the schools, is there a way that that can be an opt-in? You know, when people get notices of minutes and agendas, if they can opt in to receive the electronic version of those which are produced? So, well, I throw that out there, and they also asked, this is for Jim, I guess there's badminton nets at, I think they're at the Council on Aging Building and they're very heavy and they want to move them to the Vets Gym so that they can use, use it for programming in the gym? Let the record show, he's looking confused.
There's need of committee members, gonna call and get those.
Okay, well, I'm here, so I'm asking. The library, I didn't want to bring this up when the foundation was here, but there has been, as we just discussed, so many people that have worked on the foundation and there has been a suggestion that a plaque or some sort of recognition for all the foundation members. They've got the board at front and people that worked on the PVC and all the donors, but they don't have, there's no recognition in the library for a plaque. And I personally think that's something the trustees should approve, because it's a public building. We wanted it to sort of take the board's temperature on, and it's gonna be a lot of names and then, and we'd have to find funding for that, which obviously is not gonna come out of the foundation's money to honor them, but I just wanted to float that out there and see how you guys felt about pursuing, I don't know whether it would be some of the money left from the construction fund or whether we'd have to look to the trustees to help fund it, or, I don't know what that piece would be, but I just wanted to float the general idea, have you guys think about that.
So is it special recognition or is it a plaque where you're gonna continue to add new foundation members?
No, I think it would be those who contributed the capital campaign, recognition of the extraordinary work that went into it.
I don't have a problem with it.
Can I, I'd like to say, thank you for asking, there was another building built in town, never came before this board, names will put on it, so, my only fear is just don't forget Mr. Jones.
Yeah, well, I would, I would put the whole responsibility on the foundation to provide the list. They're the only ones who are gonna know the right people to put on.
No, I think it's a great, great idea.
Yeah, so just come back with what you want to do, what they
Okay, I just wanted to just throw that out there. And I was wondering, Jim, is the ADA hasn't started yet, the sidewalk?
By the library?
Yeah.
I was talking about that tonight at the Building Committee.
Okay. Because the fun stuff is July 10, the first concert series starts at 6:30 and the summer kickoff is the same night at 5:30. So, I asked that question because there'll be some interference. Water Resources is going, has suggested that we do a reminder to people that when, I already warned them it's gonna be a lot, okay? That when everybody shows up for the 3rd of July, there's a probability that we will have a spike in brown water. And last year, we didn't sort of remind people that and we heard about that. So they've recommended that we do a blast that Jim's going to review that just says, don't be surprised if everybody flushes their toilet and have brown water. And they've done some preliminary research on non-compliance fines, so that's gonna be coming before us. If somebody waters them on every single day and we give them a fine, our fines are very low and not much of a deterrent. So they're doing some background research on, and Karen will update you this on the future, but, on whether or not that we can come up with a better stick to enforce those. And, two small things and that's it.
Oh, you're doing great.
There has been some people in this room who might, who thought that maybe, there's been a lot of interest in having a commentary, one of the board members, as you know, I do a personal page that I just summarize our board meetings, which I can do because I don't, we don't violate open meaning laws and we can provide a pretty pithy thing. It's been suggested that wouldn't it be cool if the board did a, you know, each of us took turns saying, talking with Seth or somebody on the cable station about, here, here's a recap of what we did this week. The problem, of course, is scheduling because it would have to be timely, but I wanted to just throw that out there and see if all of you go, or
Or they could play the meeting.
Well, our meetings, well, now they're short and sweet, but sometimes they go long.
Yeah, I would say we're all available, Seth, just reach out to us and we can see who's available to talk about stuff.
The idea would be it's, it's something similar like, it's called like the Select Selectment. And one or two of you join me in the studio and we just take four or five pilots when we leave. So, for instance, like tonight would be Wind turbine or in the 4th of July, it's just, we just, for a recap very briefly. I mean, you know, obviously you can watch these meetings online, but, you know, even if it is two, three minutes. I mean, we're talking 15 to 20 minute max discussion. But this, the scheduling is, is a bit, I mean, look, you already commit so much time anyway, but I feel like it would require you coming to the studio, doing a little pre-plan, being like, what do you want to talk about? Here's what I think, here's what you guys think.
What do you guys think?
I don't, I don't have, I personally don't have an issue with it, I think it's a great idea to just further be more transparent and connect a little bit better. But what I would like to do, and I've talked to Jim a little bit about this, is get the Cable Commission together. You know, we've got some folks, yourself, I think, I know, I think it's, what, Tom Clark, Bob DiLorenzo, maybe Al, and on the liaison, I think we need to take a look at all the programming. And it would be nice, I have seen other towns do some other nice informational shows that are produced. So I think we should sit down and look at it collectively and not just haphazardly be adding things and really try to, you know, get a nice scheduling plan in place. I think that's a great idea.
The only thing I'd add to that is if you ever need us for anything, just call us because one of us is around and can clarify an issue or, you know, go on a show or whatever it happens to be.
The last, oh, no, wait, I lied. The Beach Commission has, this is important, actually. They would like to conduct a beach sticker design contest for the 2020 beach sticker. And they've had preliminary talks with the record department and with the library about places to put on, you know, drop off and pick up the entries. And I guess there's a, the prize of free, Pam says she's fine, Pam Avitabli says she's fine with a prize of free stickers or something like that to whoever comes up with the design. So they've come up with a application and I don't know if we have to vote on it or if it's something that, it's the stickers, it's what they do, but they wanted to just see if you guys, if we're okay with this.
Great idea.
It's a great idea?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a fun thing? We don't need, we don't need a vote, I don't think, right?
Different one every year, it'd be nice.
There you go, okay, so we'll let them know that and, um, they're working a bunch of other things which I won't go into right now. Because I've had more than my three minutes. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
Eight to be specific.
How many?
So I will, Karen's used all my time, so I'll just be brief. There's a field dedication on Thursday morning over here because we're breaking ground and starting that, so that, that'll be great. Jim, what, where is it actually happening on the field, at the football field?
Yeah.
At the football field.
Are you around, who's around?
Yeah, I'm gonna go to it, 8:30 in the morning on Thursday. And then the only thing, I'll just take a minute and comment, that we had a very successful trip to Ireland. Just got back last weekend, Jim was there, myself was there, someone from EDC was there. Many members of the committee were there. And we learned a lot about their government and how they work and how, like I said, we talked about windmills with people, we talked about flood control, we talked about some of the autism programs that they had. So it was, it was well organized, I've gotta give Brenda kudos for really having every, every part of every day scheduled with doing something. Learned a lot about the history, the people are so very nice and friendly and, and willing to give their culture to us. So, overall, very, very successful trip, I thought, and there's gonna be a me, a report that comes out to everybody on, on the various things that we did. But Jim, did you, any, anything to add on that or any?
No, I gave some comments to the Mariner, I think some of the things we learned, Tony, the flood control, I think has some lessons for Situate Harbor. The autism, as you talked about, the whole Wild Atlantic Way tourism promotion they did, which is the entire island, but then they break it into separate parts. We'll be talking about the Irish Heritage Trail down here and the need for regional tourism as opposed to every town kind of fighting for their own little pie. And then the other thing, I think both of us were kind of intrigued, is, is the muscle farming we saw.
Oh, right, I forgot about that.
Just strands and strands of rope in the harbors for, for muscle farming.
And they also have oyster farming, too, in Baltimore, they had that. So, what we're trying to do here, they're already doing there.
It's coming, it's coming.
Oh, just one other thing I remembered, oh, the golf courses. We went and looked at some golf courses, we got tours there, that'd be great.
Did not play.
We did not play. I tried to, but they wouldn't let me. Jim almost wrecked a cart.
Was it, what, was, was, did it drive on the other side like cars do, like is it opposite?
That's what we asked them.
The left side of the green.
The carts are on the same side as us, it's crazy. But anyways, there'll be a report that comes back and we'll, we'll touch on a lot of the things we learned and
I'm just a little insulted that we don't have, you know, you didn't bring us back any presents.
I brought Sean back something.
Oh, Sean, did you get something?
So anyways, that being said, so those are, those are the two things going on now. Any correspondences?
I think a couple, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission sent us a letter concerning Jamie's Gannett Grilled that their suspension has been, wait, here's some group of vision.
It's warded, it's strange.
Really weird, I actually read it three times, I still don't
So are they, is they
To suspend the posting above.
I think that's what they said.
They're saying that this is, I believe, the third correspondence, they gotta keep postponing.
Yeah, they're just keeping him active. Okay, so he, he's still active, but
They extended the time period.
Sustained it because of the, the fire. Told you about the beach sticker contest, we received a letter from Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, not in Western Mass. And there's Red Tide, yep, thank you for summarizing, Mr. Chair. And one letter from the Department of Air Force that says that public comments are open through July 8 concerning the fourth cliff down in Hammurak. They are doing a draft environmental assessment to determine what they need to do to sort of protect that, the endpoint that's falling off.
Yeah, I have a question about this, yeah, we, we just got it today, Sean. It's in the, the handout, so Sean and I were in that meeting with the Air Force and this letter references that something was sent to us on January 16, 2019. What, can we have access, I'd like, I'd like to know what, what their proposal is because it's great if they're gonna address it, but I'd like to know what they're doing.
As I recall, they didn't have the funds to do what they wanted, us a partner.
They were just talking about armoring the tow, basically on the tow, but I'll find, it would've gone out to the internal boards here. You might've got it in your package back then, but
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
This letter, if you want, if they don't do hard copies, that the, what they're proposing is there's a link available for people to
Take that and look at it.
To go and check it out.
I want to see what we were sent on the 16th, too. Thank you.
And the correspondence?
Great, well, that's it, can I have a motion to, oh, yeah, approve the minutes first? Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved?
Minutes of
Yeah, I can't find it.